Hey, Ollie. How's it going, Sam? He said, "Please come there." I'm happy to have you as well. That's not bad, because he can use those selectively. Yeah, she said, "Yeah, no." No, no, we keep it. Let's see if it's gonna... Now they're asking everything. No, you should keep telling us. Maybe you'll see a needy person. I mean, okay, it's asking me to sign in again. I'm doing my other email, not that one. Oh, yeah, but I'm not sure if this is it. I know, but I don't know if this is the right one.
Oh, God, that sucks. Tired, intense, yes, it is. I don't know why at night they do like events, because you're so tired. You want it, I did the same thing. Hi. What time was it?
This is what I got it to look like at home. This is what I've got in room.
Oh, I was like...
All right, Madam Clerk. Madam Mayor, would you like to begin?
Our technical difficulties are solved.
We are, we are very hopeful with the help of our excellent IT department that we will be technology issue free today.
All right, then. So who's here? All right, at this time, we are gonna start with the pledge allegiance, and I would love for Pastor Manera to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Breckus absent, Dewar Delgado, Weber, Jordan Reese, Sheevy. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, with that, our next item today is public comment. I would like the audience to know we do have 11 people signing for public comments, so this is a fair amount. If you can please be ready when I call your name to give your comments. As a reminder to everyone public today, there is an expectation of decorum while in the Reno City Council chambers. You are expected to be polite and respectful. Please address the body as a whole, do not address the individual members. Additionally, no applauding, cheering, or jeering will be permitted in this room. You may be given a warning. If you continue with this activity, you may be requested to leave the chambers. First to speak today is Mark Markell, followed by Grant Denton, followed by Jerry Misson.
Good morning, Mrs. Mayor. And gee, councilman, I have a glass, then I could tell you not paying any attention to me. I have new glasses.
New glasses, look good, Mark.
I could see how pretty you are now, I'm smiling.
I thought you were talking about her.
Okay, uh, no, mine. Anyway, first, uh, good morning, Mayor. Uh, this is Mayor, City Council Number 10, Mrs. Nager. My name is Mark Markell. I am a current Reno resident. Back in 1989, I, I got a drunk riding crash with the driver of the vehicle, and we rolled eight times. I was subjected and landed on my head, and put me in a coma for a month, and I still for five and a half months more. I'm sorry, I, I'm an example of what you, what you, you, you could happen if you get a drunk driver. I'm, I'm, I'm an example of what could happen. I don't know, but just, just, I'm just a warning, a warning and an example. Thank you.
Grant Denton giving a presentation, followed by Jerry Misson, followed by Cesar Manera.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Grant Denton, and this is my posse. This is Hannah, one of the greatest artists in all of the land, and this is Kyla, a future leader. We, uh, we're here to talk about a project that we're doing called Campo Color by Numbers. And you guys remember when you were growing up, the, uh, the Color by Numbers gig, right? So it's kinda wrapped around that, but, um, but it's about, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the word foster out of it, and we're just gonna say kids, right? It's about kids that are in a system that are, uh, that are getting close to aging out. And what happens is towards the closer we get to aging out, the less we, uh, either wanna be adopted, or the least likely the chances are. And so the, the goal is that we, um, from this project, is that we highlight mentorship, highlight guidance, uh, highlight somebody, um, get putting in a little bit of time, not much, just a little bit of time, and, uh, highlight someone helping. And I learned something from Kyla from doing this project is that, uh, most of these kids, uh, don't want sympathy, they just want someone to guide them. I learned something from Hannah is that most of these kids are, uh, and especially in Kyla's case, um, are just women in training, or little men in training. And so they just need a little bit of guidance. And so, um, so what we're gonna do, I know that some of you guys, I put some invitations in front of you, I know some of us won't be able to make it because of something called Burning Man or something, not sure, just joking. Um, and, uh, so, uh, but I wanted to show the artwork and show the value of what, um, of what happens when you mentor. Now, this is exclusive. You guys are gonna get a sneak peek of some art that they created. Uh, and this is the painting that was created by Hannah and Kyla.
So, yeah, we made this painting together. Um, Kyla would come over and hang out with my dogs and I, and I would, we would just paint for hours together. Um, yeah, we're really grateful for Grant for this opportunity, for me to be paired with Kyla, and it's been incredible. I love it, I love painting with her, and honestly, though, like, hanging out with her, the mentorship to her has been such a blessing to me, and the painting is just like a picture of what that mentorship can be like. But it's so much bigger than that, it's so much, it's so great, we're really grateful.
So why is Pecan Punch and Bloody Mary four and nine, not one and two? Bonnie wants to know.
So, yeah, this is, um, this painting is of the most iconic foods in Nevada, food and drink, so...
How cool is that? All you can eat sushi? Exactly. An awful, awful burger? Because you know, that's the one thing that we can all agree on, whenever, you know, politics gets in the way, we can all agree on that food tastes good, right? I always say there's something we can agree on, right? Wow, that's fantastic. Grant, what, what a great initiative. I think you're, you're so spot on, and mentoring is so critical to our youth. Um, congratulations. Was this a fun project to do with her?
And we wanna make sure that, that everybody knows it has, it's arts cool, but it's not as much about the art as it is about, um...
Spending the time together, right?
Right, just let somebody know that we cover a little bit about them, and, uh, and then that guidance and happiness, and so you know that some of it, you can't make it to the event, it's not as much about the event as it is, we have events sometimes, and we're like, yeah, events, uh, it's about what happens after the event, and the momentum we build, and so if we can, uh, bring awareness to how cool mentoring is, and how, uh, how impactful it is, that's what we wanna do.
Yeah, super awesome. Great job. Love it.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Jerry Misson, followed by Cesar Manera, followed by Rabbi Brier.
Good morning, City Council. Today is a thank you meeting between you and I. I, you know, the, um, the July 14th senior event that I threw in, um, Take Leah Park, Paradise Park, had, had many positive and, uh, effects on the seniors that I attended that day. But none of this could have happened without first and foremost thanking Councilman Delgado, who got the ball rolling within the city council that then included the mayor and included Bonnie Weber. That, that steamrolled into, um, the Senior Citizen Activity Committee, and also then to the Washoe County Commissioner, Kitty Jung. All of you together had given, uh, $2,500, $500 each. That was a little bit over 50% of, of the budget that I had, that once was $20,000, and came down rightfully down to, um, about $5,000. Um, I can't thank you enough. Oscar had led me to Alexis Hill, who led me to, well, Alexis and Larry and Casey with the Reno, um, events people that were a pivotal part in advising and leading me to the event. Um, and that then included the Sierra Arts Foundation, who was the fiscal agent, and Valerie Moore. All these people made a big, a big difference. I can't thank you enough for your, uh, participation. Um, some people lost out on that event. I know for me personally, um, I put in a little over $500. I know that the two food trucks that were there, they had more food than there were people. I know the face painters and the balloon sculptor, both did not, um, get enough attendance, so, um, I, I learned a lot from this event that will hopefully spawn a second senior block and roll party. I know now to have it at a, a different place and a different time of year. And, um, I just, uh, it did take a little bit of a toll on me, I worked on that for nine, nine months, and the two people that I called a group were extremely helpful, a couple of seniors. I know now to make that more broader, because the next time, the next event next year, I hope to be, uh, uh, more successful, but I wanted to personally thank each and every one of you, uh, for your support, um, moral support and dollar support. Again, thanks a lot.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Cesar Manera, followed by Rabbi Brier, followed by Heather Matthews.
Good morning, Mayor Sheevy and City Council members. Like usual, we are here, and, uh, this time I'm extremely excited. Two weeks ago, we had Father Jorge from Little Flower Church, and this morning we have Rabbi Brier from Beth Or Temple.
When my husband and I moved here about 38 years ago, I came in as a traveling nurse to what was then Washoe Medical Center and is now Renown. It was a small town, and, um, we've continued to be residents and proud residents of Ward Four for 38 years. Over the years, we've seen Reno grow quite a bit, more than double in size, and address a number of issues: homelessness, safety, budget, taxes, water, and growth. Thank you, each of you, Mayor Sheevy, City Manager, and all of the council members for all that you do to create a wonderful city. Please know that, um, people everywhere, praying people, pray for those in elected positions such as yours. Know that you are prayed for regularly. And several decades ago, as an attorney, my law office was here in the FIB building on the 10th floor, so it's my privilege to be back here as now Rabbi, to, um, lead you in prayer. Um, many of us appreciate the rebranding of Reno to say "believe," and for those of us of faith communities, we may have a particular interpretation other than maybe the Peter
And we came and we prayed there at the same time that we had gone to every law enforcement agency, court offices, we went all over the place. But this year, we thought that instead of running around the city, we would invite all of you to our house, come for one hour. We want to again, continue to pray. I am thankful that Rabbi Brier read the same verse that I've been reading for eight months in front of you, pray for the welfare of the city. And this is what we're all about. If there is an agenda, you already figured it out, is prayer and blessing the city. And I also emailed it to all of your assistance. I think that it's great if you can reply and be there. We would love to have you there, okay? Have a blessed week.
Thank you so much. Last year, it was tremendous, so I'm looking forward to this year.
Thank you.
Heather Matthews, followed by Tammy Holt Still, followed by Nona Perry.
My name is Heather Matthews and I'm a graduate of UNR and also California State University with a Master of Science, summa cum laude, in career counseling. I've been trying to get my book, Walking Between the Shadow and the Light, published for four years now. I have a case now in District Court in Carson City and I haven't been getting justice. I've tried to get Judge Wilson recused now for the second time. He and the law firm at 71 Washington Street, who would represent Satan for a fee, have been totally obliterating my defense of intentional torts, our waiver of sovereign immunity, which they are claiming. And they are citing Franchise Tax Board case as their epitome to this defense. That's a totally different thing than coming over into another state, which California State University did, paying bribes to public officials, publishing houses and even Best Buy Store to put spyware in my computer to prevent the publishing of my book. The Franchise Tax Board case involved a person that moved from California to Nevada to not pay the Franchise Tax Board and they came over to investigate them. And that was in the scope and course of their employment. Coming into Nevada was not in the scope and course of the employment of California State University to commit an intentional tort and cause injury to me, loss of income, emotional distress and aggravated stalking of me and trying to cause injury to my person. I want Judge Wilson recused from this case. He has not even one time acknowledged through seven different motions, and some of them were 12 and 14 pages long outlining the intentional tort is a waiver in all 50 states of sovereign immunity. The government has to be able to be held accountable when they do egregious things that hurt citizens of another state. Then I also set aside time for myself to be heard, which is also in Nevada revised statutes, and Judge Wilson dismissed that also. He has now sent a letter stating that he did nothing wrong. Well, under Rule 60, misrepresentation and fraud and leaving out evidence that is pertinent to a case and totally obliterates their defense is grounds for recusal and also grounds to order my motion to vacate be upheld and Judge Russell put in his place. This is supposed to be one nation under God with liberty and justice for all, and I have not received justice. And I want everyone in here that has the power to help in this cause and for God's word to go forward as we just had a prayer, praying for this city. Thank you very much for your time. And I know the Holy Spirit, and I have already won.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next comment is from Tammy Holt Still, followed by Nona Perry, followed by Steve Walgast.
Good morning, Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. I know that you guys are moving forward on different things for the North Valleys. What you have received or will receive is an article that we've done some research. As you know, as you annex, you're annexing right next door to a Washoe County resident, but yet they can't vote. Texas had the same issue. It's not anything new. It is time for the city of Reno, given the information, seeing it's out there, you're not recreating the wheel, it's time to move forward and make it so that every citizen that you are pulling in or sitting next to or creating an issue on that little imaginary boundary line has a right to vote also. Has the right to say no to you. Has the right to say yes to you. But has a right. Right now, the citizens of Washoe County where you're annexing next to don't have any rights to your city, except for coming here, which I've done for two years and eight months. It's time to look at how you're going to, you want to be a welcoming city, then you need to make sure that what you're doing to the citizens in this Washoe County area have rights, have the needs met. And this is a good example for you to see. And we'll talk later. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. My name's Nona Perry. I live here in Reno. I live 3,000 Dickerson Road, right next door to Oxbow Park. I own the property on the south side and I lease the property on the north side from the railroad. Thank you, Mayor Shivi and Council, for having this free time for we to come and talk. I have recently noticed, and I've tried to be hands off of the park because I tended to be a smother mother about it and about the safety issues, but lately, the park is closed around dusk. That's what the signs says anyway. Sometimes nobody closes it because there's still cars in there. Other times, it closes and there's a, there's just a pole that goes across. And people lately, just Reno's growing and people that come to Oxbow Park at night, that number's growing too. People have been parking at the gate. There's one sign, there's one sign that says "Fire access, do not block." It's way up high and people are parking there anyway. It's a one-lane road. If people pull over on the edge to, right here, as you can see, on the left side going down into the park, there's a little tiny bit of room that's next to my gate. However, if an ambulance or a fire truck, which is usually used when ambulances aren't available, tried to come in there, there is no way they could get around those cars that are parking there. I think it's imperative to make it more clear that there's no parking there. For the sake of the park and my highly foliage property, this was a big year for foliage. And as it dries out this fall, it's going to be very dangerous for fire. There are still a lot of homeless people walking down the railroad tracks and coming into the park from the back. They live in there. They try to stay unnoticed. However, they start fires to stay warm, they start fires to cook, they do those things in there. And I'm just asking, number one, can I put no parking signs on my sides, both sides of that fence on the way in? And also, if I can call the police to say that someone is blocking that entrance. From what I understand, there is an entrance clear at the other end. However, that involves waiting for the train. And minutes are important during these fire seasons, incredibly important. And I would just like to have some clarifications on where I stand and how I can be more of a service as a public citizen and yet not get in anybody's way. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. I'm sure, Rick, will you have someone from Public Works meet with her?
Steve Walgast, followed by Sam Dene, followed by Andrew Samuelson.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. I'm Steve Walgast. I wanted to talk a little bit about the pace of the construction that we're currently seeing. I went for a hike in Steamboat Hills and looked down at the many developments that are currently being built. And I feel like it would be wise to pace new development approvals, given the number of new residences that are currently under construction. The critical housing shortage that we hear about may be much less acute once these and of course, many other ongoing developments are completed. Most economists are forecasting a recession, the optimistic ones are forecasting a slowdown. I think we risk going from a record boom to a record bust. Housing will become a lot more affordable if we start seeing a 30% vacancy rate. Next slide, please. So this is a development right near my home. It's called Symphony Ranch, Kalina Rosa. It's about 100 homes. Next slide, please. This is the Summit Mall Apartments. If you go up close, it looks like a complete city in and of itself, just from the number of buildings and the height of the buildings. It's going to have a lot of capacity. Next slide, please. These are the Toll Road Apartments. I don't think any of them are occupied yet. It's quite a number of buildings. They are very large buildings and they will empty out onto the traffic circle that is starting to see traffic problems as it is. Next slide, please. This is the Carmella Ranch Development, down close to 341. You can, if you're looking for more single-family homes, this view only shows part of the area that they will be building in. There's much more to the left, but I wanted to capture an image showing some of the homes being built. Next slide, please. And this is the New Mountain Gate 78 Development, which is single-family homes being built right across the street from the South Valleys Library. That's already kind of a traffic bottleneck, but it's going to be that much more urgent. So as you look ahead and as you consider new projects, I have a feeling that it might make sense to digest some of the new capacity that is just coming online at this point. Thank you very much.
Sam Dene, followed by Andrew Samuelson, followed by Ken Becker.
Sam Dene, that's me, the guard angel against media wacko freaks and government lack of oversight sometimes, to put it politely. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation against enemies inside the, outside of the border. And then I was a pilot for Pan American World Airways, the greatest airline, one of the greatest companies in the history of the world, until the Lockerbie attack, terrorist attack. And then my, that wasn't funny. And then my, then my company, Pan American World Airways, was thrown under the bus by our own government. And you can look it up. At any rate, I'm responsible for 88%. Oh, after Pan Am was blown out of business, I started coming to these meetings, 1993. And I've been virtually every single government meeting in the community since 1993. And I'm responsible for 88% of the good things about Reno. That gentleman showing all of those mass developments up there, you can give me credit for that. Or most people would say you can blame me for that. I was the person who was ordered by Colonel Kazmierski over at the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada to help bring Tesla to Reno. And thus, we have the Tesla effect. Not really a good thing because you saw that mass amount of gaggle up there from all of those pictures, one after another, development, development, development. What could go wrong? We've got so many good things going on. I'm responsible for helping bring the Giga factory. I'm responsible for saving Burning Man. Now Burning Man is probably the best thing of all, except that the poor law enforcement have to look the other way with all the crimes taking place out of there. What does that do to the law enforcement's heart when they have to arrest that man for doing the same thing they're looking, and then the people do out there? That's wrong. And that's because they're being given indirect orders to leave those people alone because they bring so much money to Reno. At any rate, I could go on and on. I am, I am responsible for a lot of, a lot of the, I used to think it was good stuff. I'm saying this, now we got gridlock, road rage, hatred, enemies amongst the families, everything. Casting aspersions upon the City Council, people mad at everything. That's not good. So, but what could go wrong? So I'm about to go on a sabbatical, maybe, and leave this for a while. But before I close out, I do have to tell you one quick story. Of all the things that Sam does, his arch enemy is the Reno Gazette media wacko freaks from right over there. Oh, who's that sitting, who's that sitting in the Reno Gazette chair over there? Is he working for the Reno Gazette? He's a new guy, I guess. At any rate, the Reno Gazette, for the first time ever, I complimented the Reno Gazette two weeks ago for having a great report exposing all of the carpetbaggers that are being brought into town and all the special deals that are made. And then suddenly yesterday, the Reno Gazette itself, full-page article exposing that their previous reporter was wrong, saying everything they're doing, all the money coming in is good. So stepping on their own selves, stepping on their own reporters, just because Sam complimented the guy. What are the chances?
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Andrew Samuelson, followed by Kevin, excuse me, Ken Becker, followed by Evan Chenoweth.
Good morning. My name is Andrew. I'm with the Trucking Metals Bicycle Alliance, here to talk about Item D5, the Audi Wells multimodal improvement project. Want to express our support for everything that RTC has presented, but specifically the addition of the protected cycle track from I-80 on wells around Sutro. This piece is extremely important because without it, the facility, as it was planned on Audi, is really amazing, but it'd kind of be out there by itself. And providing this connection to the rest of the network will compound the usefulness of the whole project. I think this project aligns with the master plan goals of responsible, well-managed growth, thriving downtown university district, vibrant neighborhood centers and self-safe, healthy and inclusive community. Also aligns with the goals of the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan that was just adopted, specifically create lively, low-carbon neighborhoods and healthy, equitable urban forest. So as we add more facilities that are safe and just foolproof for people of all ages to use, I think we'll see more people deciding to use their bike for a significant portion of their trips. And this benefits everybody with better air quality, healthier population, less traffic and more parking available for those that do have to drive. Trucking Metals Bicycle Alliance is extremely excited to see this project come to fruition. So I want to say thanks to RTC, to you guys and City of Sparks for making it happen, and especially to RTC for incorporating our input into the design. So thank you very much.
Great to see you, Andrew.
You too.
Evan Chenoweth? Oh, excuse me, Ken Becker, followed by Evan Chenoweth.
Good morning. I'm Ken Becker from 1306 Canyon Creek Road. I'm an applicant for the Financial Advisory Board position that you have later in your agenda. I don't know if you'll get to that before I have to leave for another matter. I appreciate the opportunity to apply for this position. Want to thank Councilmember Brekis for encouraging me and the Financial Board for endorsing my candidacy, and also to the City Clerk and the City Attorney Office for having the briefing last week on open meetings, law and ethics prior to this position. Thank you.
Our last speaker, Madam Mayor, is Evan Chenoweth.
Hello. My name is Evan Chenoweth. Thanks for this forum. I just wanted to emphasize and agree with everything that Mr. Samuelson said about the Audi Wells project. I'm really excited for what that can bring to that neighborhood. I live in the Wells neighborhood and concern citizens just about the availability and ability for people of all ages, abilities to walk and bike safely around that neighborhood. I think that this proposal and this project also goes well with our sustainability goals, global warming. Global warming has obviously impacted us here with fires and potential drought. So it's good to have this little segment help improve that and show people that there's an active transport option. The optionality is really the best part of this. It gives people a way to say, hey, I see people biking. I see these bike paths. I see these nice tree-lined streets. I don't have to drive my car, or if I don't have a car, I don't have to go buy one if I feel like I couldn't afford one otherwise. So that's a really, a really great thing. It really opens up the equity of the, the use of the street. Local pollution is another, another issue that this, this will help with. And again, the, just the health of getting people outside walking, biking, and hopefully reducing accidents with, and collisions with pedestrians and cyclists. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for putting this together to the RTC and for everyone involved. This is a really, really great example of what, what we can do as a city. So I'm excited to see this and other bike infrastructure and walking infrastructure come together and really make a great network where you can say, hey, I don't need to drive to the other side of town, because I can take this interconnected network of bike paths that are protected and off-street from one end of the city to the other. There's so many other run-on effects. You know, all these concerns about, oh, we don't have enough parking. Well, people could bike there, and they don't need to park. So there's things like that as well. So I, I just hope that we can move quick on this and people will see very quickly how effective this is and how great it is for, for that neighborhood, and then we can copy it elsewhere. So yeah, thank you very much.
Great job. I didn't get your name.
It's Evan Chenoweth. Yeah.
And are you with a particular group, Evan?
I'm not. I know Mr. Samuelson. But yeah, I'm, I'm a motorist. I drive a car. You know, I have to drive to work every day. Unfortunately, out to USA Parkway, it's kind of far. But I, I bike a lot around town. And so I'd like to kind of keep that opportunity available.
All right, great job.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no further general public comment today.
All right. I'm going to send it over to Councilwoman Weber.
Madam? I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that we have a really huge event coming up in Ward 4. And it's with the air races. And it's, the City of Reno presents Ward 4's Takeoff Celebration and Biggest Little Parade and Flyover. And it's on Saturday, September 7th. It's from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Reno-Stead Airport. The Biggest Little Parade, Parade features our Madam Mayor as Grand Marshal of the parade. And it's going to be a great free event for everyone. We've had the air races out in Ward 4 and in the North Valleys at the Stead Airport for, for, this is its 44th year, 54th year, I'm sorry, 54th year. And we have this exciting event free to all the public. And we're asking for vendors, and we have food trucks, and we have a flyover that's been sponsored by Mr. Chuck Bluth to have a flyover out at the, at the event. RTC is sponsoring and, and has extended their route of Route 7 that takes you right to the airport now for our, our event on Saturday. And then on the first day of the, of the air races, which is Wednesday, the 11th, all zip codes that are in Ward 4 and then surrounding, 89508, 89506, and 89512 will be able to go into the air races for free on Wednesday, the 11th. So that's really working well with Reno Air Race Association and lots of different folks. And then bus rides will be, again, by RTC. They will be free on that Wednesday, the 11th, and for the September, Saturday, September 7th, takeoff event. So I just wanted to share with you all. It's really an exciting event for our community. And it's, it's the air races and, and all that they have brought to our community and to our city. Thank you.
Great job. I know you've been working hard on that.
Thank you.
Very nice. All right.
Madam Clerk, back at you. With that, we will be transitioning to our approval of the agenda, in which I will send it to the manager for any changes or announcements.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have potentially two items. Item D4, which is the Washoe County EMS Oversight Program Presentation. We'd like to possibly move that up until right after consent. Ms. Conti, who's with us now, needs to give the same presentation at the City of Sparks later today. So I want to get her in and out. Neil, and that's Item D4. D, sorry, my sheet says D4. I'm hearing it's D6.
D6.
Okay. D6, scratch that. And then Item G11 is the Ward 1 NAV appointments. And Ms. Brekis isn't with us today, so it's up to the council how you want to proceed with that item.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman Doerr.
And then is that same go for Finance, G12? Or did she ask us to move forward with that?
The Fab, I believe, is Mr. Reese's.
I'm sorry, you made this so much, sorry. Got it. Thank you.
Those are the only changes that I have, Madam Clerk.
All right.
Madam Mayor, with that, we will be looking for approval of your agenda.
All right. Thank you so much.
Second.
Just before we do that, I just wanted to say Happy National Dog Day, Rob Boni. Anyway, okay, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, transitioning to our consent agenda. I'll send it back to you for any council items to be removed for discussion.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, Councilman Reese, any items you'd like to pull? All right, Councilman Delgado.
Nope.
Councilwoman Jordan?
Nope.
Councilwoman Doerr?
No.
Councilwoman Weber? All right. May I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It showed that B6 was a resolution of the Reno City Council creating North Valleys Water Management Subcommittee. But then on the online, it showed that the resolution was actually under Item, let me find it here.
Item G2.
What's that?
If I could step in.
Yeah.
I think your question also relates to Item G2. The reason being, this is an attachment, is this will set up the subcommittee components as far as how many people sit on that board, and that ties directly to your resolution. So they're tandem items.
It wasn't clear whether it was on Item G, because it was listed twice.
Correct. So under B6 is the resolution for the actual approval to create the subcommittee.
Okay.
And then Item G2.
I guess I'd like to pull that, because I had one suggestive change in the resolution.
All right, go ahead. So I'm going to send it back to you before we approve the consent agenda. Councilwoman Doerr?
Oh, okay, fine. In the resolution, it mostly talks about infrastructure. And it just, it seems to be very infrastructure-focused. And what it was missing, we had community comment about the nature wildlife preserve there in Swan Lake. So my recommendation would be to either have another line or just to add the words either flood management and watershed management, watershed management, flood management operations, so we cover everything, instead of just focused on the sewer and the, it, it was just focused on stuff we build and not on a broader management. So I didn't know who drafted that or what the issue was. You know, and if the council thinks it's broad enough. Well, if, I would then suggest you just add either the word, probably the word watershed management is the broader word to infrastructure.
All right, give me a motion.
Okay, well, I would move that we adopt the resolution with the additions of watershed management as one of the focus items for the committee.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, going back to consent, I believe, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam Mayor, with that, no additional items were pulled. We'll be looking for a motion for the rest of your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Councilman Reese.
Second.
A second from Councilwoman Jordan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, with that, transitioning to Item D6, the presentation from Christina Conti.
Christina, come on up. How are you?
I'm very well, thanks. How are you?
Good.
I appreciate you guys accommodating the change.
We appreciate you being here.
My pleasure. You have my presentation?
Yes, we do. It'll come up. There should be.
Do you have a clicker? Or are you, because I'm going to kind of go through them quick.
There is a clicker. So we'll give it to you right here.
Hello. My name's Christina Conti. I'm the EMS Oversight Program Manager. I also manage the Emergency Preparedness Program for Washoe County. This is our annual presentation to all the councils. You're a signatory of our inter-local agreement. And so just giving you kind of an update on what we're doing. I'm going to go through the first slides fairly quickly. This is your team. There are five of us in the program. The inter-local agreement, it is coming up on its fifth birthday. And the biggest change for this was it turned the EMS program within this region from a compliance perspective to a performance, looking at the entire region and how EMS works collectively. So there's five signatories for the inter-local agreement, you being one, then City of Sparks, Washoe County, Trucking Meadows Fire, let's see, Board of Fire Commissioners, and then the Health District. And within that inter-local agreement, here is your EMS Advisory Board. So Manager Newby actually is the chairwoman for our board right now. And the biggest thing for the board is simply that concurrent review of topics for the regional EMS system, so that it doesn't have to go between every board individually. The idea is that everybody gets together kind of at that front end and then pushes it up. And so here's that org chart. So I know that I went through that quick, but it's just kind of a refresher. So the annual data that I'm presenting to you is actually a year old. The fiscal year 19 data will be published at our EMS Advisory Board meeting in November. And so we can push that through to you. There were over 70,000 calls for service in fiscal year 18. So essentially, it's eight EMS calls per hour in a 24-hour-a-day cycle. So here's your main highlights that we want to bring to your attention. Of those 70,000, 52,000 were matched between a fire agency and REMZA. And so that is a 1% increase from the previous fiscal year. One of the reasons that we bring that up is because for a while there, we had incredible growth. And I'm not saying that it has slowed or stopped, but between those two fiscal years, it was a little bit different. The median response time from end route to fire first responder arrival was 4 minutes 19 seconds, and then for REMZA, 5 minutes and 52 seconds. That is regional data, so it is not specific for City of Reno. And then the patient perspective down there on the bottom, one of the things that we know to be true is that a patient doesn't necessarily care who's knocking on the door, simply that somebody is. So we take out the badge and we say, who's there first? So for a Priority 1 call, from the moment that they pick up the phone and call 911 to somebody knocking on the door is 5 minutes and 52 seconds is the median time. And so here is your arrival on scene and how it kind of splits out, recognizing that there might be some cancellations happening. And so it's our six-way pie chart. The regional initiatives, one of the things that we worked really hard on is recognizing that calls for service don't necessarily need a two-tier response. And so that first one, it shows you the implementation dates. Omega calls, more omega calls got added in February 1st, 2018. They were incorporated into the system. Card 33 calls, those are facilities that actually have medical on staff and have the, at some level, have the AEDs available. And so they have the ability to do life-saving measures already. And so the response looks different for there, and same thing with Alpha calls. We also, a huge accomplishment for our region, developed a regional set of protocols. And so eight agencies, starting January of 2018, all of our pre-hospital agencies were on the same protocols. And then actually, in July, Story County signed on. We did a training for first responders. It looked at intellectual and/or developmental disabilities, including police officers. And we got it post-accredited, certified? I don't know the terminology, but the CEUs were available for post also. We did it as a briefing and then as a longer training, just saying, hey, we understand that in an emergency, when things are happening quick, you have no ability to really take that moment. You want to, for the safety of the individual. But if it's not a quick emergency, then what are the things that you can do to kind of help that individual who's got an intellectual or developmental disability, so that they are not harmed further by what's happening? And then the Mass Casualty Incident Plan, one of the things that we're really proud of in our region is that prior to 1 October, actually based on what happened in Paris, we realized that in this region, we don't have a plan for over 100 or multiple locations, and we do now. And then ones that I'm sure you're aware of, CAD to CAD, is an ongoing discussion. And so that is an in-process initiative as well as a continuous quality improvement program that would have all of the partners kind of doing QI together, since they're under the same protocols now. This is one of the biggest things of that fiscal year. Hopefully, you guys have seen it, really looking at the use of 911 or misuse of 911 and saying, hey, if you can pause and wonder if it is 911-worthy, then it's probably not. And so here's all the other places that you can call to get the same service. The report always includes partner accomplishments. And so we do not, as the EMS Oversight Program, edit that in any way. We simply take the agency's comments and put them right in. So currently, the strategic plan has been updated. So we are operating under a new plan, May of 2019. So what you see in front of you are all, and I'm not going to read them all, but I'm happy to answer any questions, are all of the objectives that we are working on for this next five years. When we update the project or the strategic plan again, we're actually going to do what we did before and do that SWOT analysis and really start from scratch again. So this looks at the existing projects that we had been working on. Was there anything that could be taken for, to the next level with them? Was there anything more to do? And then was there anything new? And so there are six goals again. And the last thing to just review with you that was a big thing, and even though it's not in the right fiscal year, I'm here, and so I want to take the opportunity to tell you about it. We did a CASPER, which is Community Assessment for Public Health Emergency Response. It is a CDC algorithm that says if you do a certain amount of surveys within your community, then you can actually apply that to your whole community. And so we were able to do 94%. The statistician within our program, Heather Kerwin, is the one that led this project. For you as council members, some of the results are probably, or could be something that is of interest to you. What you see in red are things that have to do with emergency response and when we think about our citizens. So less than half of the citizens were aware of the emergency notification system. Why that's important is that's what we use to evacuate people. And so we would want them to know about it and be registered. The great thing is that the majority of the household said that they would intend to evacuate in the event of a voluntary evacuation. And then 94% of those could evacuate within an hour without assistance. And so those are kind of preparedness details that are important to us from an emergency management and emergency response perspective. So with that report came a lot of recommendations. And so hopefully, you're going to start seeing with next month being Preparedness Month, some education and outreach within the community that is backed by this data. And then obviously, providing information in both of the primary languages whenever possible, so that we can hit all of our, our groups. And so I went kind of quick, but I am available for any questions you might have.
All right, I thought you did a great job. Thank you so much. Okay, council members, any questions? I'm going to give you three minutes. Any questions? No? Okay, all right, good job.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Hi, Madam Mayor. Thank you. At this time, we will transition to our next item, which is going to be Item D1, an update from the Community Development Department regarding massage establishments.
All right, thank you so much. I'm so happy to see this on here.
Good morning.
The Sex Trafficking Task Force has been watching this closely, and we're making recommendations. So I wanted to thank you for being so proactive.
Well, good morning. Good morning, Madam Mayor. Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for the License Division. This item here, again, was brought forward or requested by Councilmember Brekis on the possibilities of licensing the massage establishments as a privileged-type business. So we have a few recommendations in here. I'm not going to go through every bit of the staff report, but just to compare, currently, we license massage establishments under the General Business License rules in Title IV. We have approximately 94 of those establishments licensed today. Our massage therapists, which are the masseuses, are licensed primarily as independent contractors. They work independent of the establishments. And we have approximately 206 of those licensed, and both are licensed under Title IV. And what that means, the difference between Title IV and our privileged license code and Title V, is Title V had some background check requirements. I will, wanted to add that as a massage therapist, the massage, the state of Nevada does conduct a background check in all massage therapist licenses. So they all go through an FBI and a state background check. The massage establishments, where there may be some challenges, is that they do not go through unless they are also a massage therapist, because there are cases where a few are owned, and they are massage therapists. So they are licensed by the state as well and would have gone through the background checks. So really, what we're looking at, the real difference between Title IV and Title V is, you know, again, do we want to, I just need some direction from council to bring something back to you guys with some options of what that looks like, switching from just doing general business licensing versus privileged-type license. There are four possibilities that we added in the staff report. One is to create an ordinance to amend amendments to regulate massage establishments under Title V, which is our privileged license activity. Just regulate only the massage establishment under Title V, or create new ordinance in Title IV with work card requirements for the operators and/or the therapist, or continue licensing as massage establishments and independent contractors under Title IV. So those are four options. You can choose either one of those options. I just needed some direction to bring something back to the group. And it would be just like the three-step process. We'd bring back some recommendations. These changes would require a business impact statement, so we would go through that process and outreach to all the establishments.
Okay, thank you so much. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, should be noted for the record, we received an opinion from Jeff Church that has been included in the record and submitted to council.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Councilwoman Durden, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I have some questions on cost. So Title V would have the background check, Title IV does not.
That's correct.
Okay, so the cost of the background check is how much, and who would be paying for that?
The applicant would be paying for that background check. It's $145 for the check. And there's some additional costs for fingerprinting.
Okay.
Approximately $65.
For the fingerprinting?
Yeah, in addition to the $145.
So 65 plus $145. And then the privileged license costs what compared to the general license?
We can structure it either as a flat rate, or we can also have a privileged license as, under gross receipts. So we have the option to do either or. So right now, under Title IV, General Business License, they're paying their license fee based on their gross receipts. And we calculate the license fee using the amount of money that they make.
Okay, so here's what I'm trying to get at. So I know what the intent of the oversight of this and the background checks is, which I support. I'm trying to understand if you are at LaSance Spa, and they do hair and nails, and they have two technicians who do massages. What is that person, what were they paying before, or their business? And what will they be paying now?
And again, it would depend. So what they're paying now would be based on what they earn under the gross receipt fee schedule, so...
That's the structure they're paying now?
That's what they're currently paying now. We can struct, we can, to, and I think where you're going to maybe lessen that impact, we can structure a privileged license the same way, that just because it's privileged, it doesn't mean that it has to be a flat fee or a certain amount. We could still base it on gross receipts. So there would be no net, real net change. The additional expense would be going through the background check.
So approximately 220? Is that the math?
About that, yes. That's correct.
Didn't major in math. Okay, so I'm just trying to understand if you are an independent or you work under one of the, you know, many establishments we have here in our community, what it means for those out there to their pocketbook? So it's approximately $220 more to, under this new structure?
That's correct. If we acquire the background check, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, and then the independent contractors do pay, that's their own, they're independent, so they're paying based on their gross. The salons are paying on what they gross as well. But we can structure it, like I said, no real net change.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from council members? Councilwoman Durden, three minutes.
Yep. One thing I missed in this presentation was, or what brought this to the fore? In other words, are we having issues? Is there questions about what are massage parlors, the definition?
We have had some concerns with human trafficking in some of the establishments. Kristy Brunner's here from the State Massage Board as well to answer any questions if you have any additional questions on what the state is required to do. But there are some concerns. And I know that the mayor had some concerns as well. And Councilman Brekis had some concerns as well, as well as, you know, RPD. But we're just looking at these options. And if you, you know, we've had a lot of massage parlors pop up recently, and...
That was my next question. How many in the last year?
I don't have the last year, I can get it for you, but I have, I just have the total of 94. But it's, it's a significant amount. And I'm not saying that it's good or bad, but it's a concern.
I just wanted to get a better understanding of the issue. And then what is the hope and dream, that we would more narrowly define them or have like enforcement codes that would help us regulate them better, or what?
Yeah, I think the primary purpose was to have the establishment owners go through a background check.
Yep.
Just checking if there's any issues that we should be concerned with. The other one is possibly limiting hours of operation, that maybe a massage parlor doesn't need to be open 24 hours a day. If they're in that particular zone, they're allowed to be open 24 hours a day. Typically, zoning throughout the city is until 11:00 PM. So that's something that we would like to look at and bring back.
Okay. The woman from the Massage Board, is she here?
Yes, she is.
Where are you?
Kristy Brunner.
Kristy, where are you? Oh, there you are. Thank you so much.
And Kristy's one of the investigators we've been working closely with.
I really appreciate you. This is a problem that they're seeing in a lot of cities. As you know, we've had a lot open up in the last year. You know, there's definitely some red flags to sort of look for, and then they can identify. I do believe that we did close down one massage parlor already. Some of these stories are absolutely horrific. But at the same time, you know, there are some also good actors, right? So we want to make sure that, you know, we're not penalizing those people as well. But we have seen sex trafficking, and it's been, you know, pretty frightening. So I appreciate you being here. I'm going to have Councilwoman Durden ask a question, but stay right here. I want you to speak a little bit on what you're seeing across Nevada. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Durden.
Thank you very much. And that's, here's my only concern, and I'm trying to see if there's a way that we can structure this, is does a massage parlor mean massages are the only service in which they offer? Because here's what I'm afraid of. We have a lot of really good salons that have massages as an option, spas, you know, salons. I want to make sure that we're not somehow inadvertently sweeping up decades of really good operators hitting them with $220 annually, a new process, more time, when our target is these pop-up 24-hour solely massage-type facilities. And I'm curious if there's a way that we can distinguish between the two. Like, in other words, if you have an operation that does more than just massage, you have hair, you have options of five things, that you could maybe still fall under the old process. And, but if you are solely massage and you're 24-hour, you know what I'm trying to get at? I'm afraid we're going to punish those that don't need to be punished.
I do, and we have that combination. The Pepper Mills is probably a good example, any one of the casinos that offer all of these services under one roof. But massage establishment, it's something that we can define a little more. Typically, in our mind, it is specifically massage establishment, just for massage only, not offering other services.
Okay, that gives me a little more comfort, because I...
And that's kind of the avenue, that's kind of what we're focused on.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about kind of what you're seeing across Nevada?
Sure. So again, my name is Kristy Brunner. I'm with the Nevada State Board of Massage Therapy. I am the Compliance Investigator. With that, that means that I go into every massage establishment in northern Nevada, all the way from Tahoe, I go to Wendover, Ely, the entire state. I also go down to Vegas and help out down there. And we kind of take our cues from, Vegas is a much bigger area. So some of the stuff that we saw five years ago that wasn't happening here was happening in Vegas, is coming up here. Four years ago, when I started going out and doing the inspections, we probably had four to five, what we would call illicit massage establishments. We now have almost 30. So in four years, it's grown exponentially.
From what to what, did you say?
From five to about 30.
Or just standalone?
Yes, yes. And in these establishments, we do see signs of people living in the establishments. You know, I, changes of clothes, sometimes lingerie, things that just aren't normal in the other 350 massage establishments I go into every year. So there's definitely a problem, and we'd be happy to work with...
And denying service to women is another sort of red flag.
Yes, yes. Or having an ATM in a massage establishment, frankly, is, that's a huge red flag, hours of operation.
So there's no tracking when a male goes in there? It's a big sex trafficking issue. And I appreciate your hard work. You guys have been at the Sex Trafficking Task Force and done a phenomenal job.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Yeah, I'm really proud of you guys.
Thanks.
I mean, you are taking a hard-line approach, great job.
Okay, Councilwoman Durden, and then we're going to move on.
Yep. So I only use 30 seconds of my last three minutes, but...
Then you get...
I don't want any extra time.
You're going to get three minutes.
Thank you. I just had a question, two questions, actually. So it strikes me rather like alcohol, where you have alcohol as an accessory to dining.
You could, yes.
Right? The kind of issue that Councilwoman Durden was bringing up, where the main purpose is maybe overall spa. And this is secondary, you know, one of many options. The alternative is the standalone, but then I'm also curious about people that come to your house. So we've had people even come to our house, you know, bring their own massage board, do it right at your house. So are you thinking about regulating all, like, independent contractors? I assume that's what that is, businesses?
That's a, that's a question for the council. I believe that since the therapists are going through the background, an additional background is not going to solve any problems, you know, that we're not seeing issues with the therapist itself. It's primarily, I think, the massage establishment, where the owner is not a therapist and has not gone through any background check.
Gotcha.
And that's the kind of the concern that we're trying to address.
And then I'm also concerned about, if we do regulate this, I'd like to anticipate workarounds. So for example, you have the massage, and so they add nails. But it's really primarily massage. But they provide one more service or something, just to say, we're not just all about this. So just some things to think about when you guys are moving forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? The other thing, and I just wanted you to confirm, is there a high rate of foreign women in those establishments where their papers are being taken from them? Are you seeing that?
We don't see that, because we don't request that. I have only seen that in one massage establishment, and that was probably four years ago, when we first started going in and looking for this, where we went in and someone only had their papers, a photo of their papers on their phone. They weren't allowed to have their own ID. Is that what you're asking?
And are you seeing a lot of the workers fly up from Las Vegas?
Yes.
To Reno?
Yes. Even their massage license will tell us that their address is in Las Vegas. And they've told me, I spoke to one worker in an establishment two weeks ago, and she told me that she was flying back tomorrow, and she'll be coming back in a couple of weeks. She was going there to see her family, and that she goes back and forth on Allegiant.
Okay, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess when I saw this as part of our agenda, I didn't know a lot about it, because we only got one page of information. And so obviously, this council is concerned with any establishment that is not following the law, that is involved in either illicit or trafficking-type behaviors. There's a lack of sort of direction for me as a council member as to what you would like to see us do. At the end of the day, we'll throw whatever resources or rules or changes you can anticipate, but I need more direction from you. If it's hours, if it's licensing, if it's working more closely with the state regulatory body, I'm happy to do all those things, but there's not enough here for me to do much today. So what do you need from us?
If I could take this one, Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director. This agenda item was in response to requests from the city council, so we intentionally didn't provide a specific recommendation. It's really a policy question. Hearing the discussions and the potential concerns about cost impacts, there really aren't any cost impacts for the individual therapists. It's for the establishment. If we go to a background check, and getting at Councilwoman Durden's point about potential workarounds and loopholes, that could be one if we have not a requirement for a privileged license, if they're coupled with some other service. So I think my recommendation, just hearing the discussion at this time, is either make the establishments a privileged license, or don't. And that's really the policy question for the council here, and then we can implement it. But that would be a fairly minimal impact.
That would be the motion I would like to see as a privileged license on those. So, oh, thank you. Wait, okay, Councilwoman Durden, go ahead.
I will be back. Okay, now, I'm going to push back a little bit on the cost, because if you're a small business owner and you have four massage therapists, and you're picking up their background check and their licensing, that's an impact.
So to clarify, the massage therapists already must have a background check, so it would not be a new requirement on them.
Thank you.
It would be one fee for the establishment as a whole.
Thank you.
$210.
Thank you for that clarity. But here's the other thing, as you were giving an example, so you do a background check. And let's say the massage therapist all pass with flying colors. You're trying to get to the owner, right? So are you asking for a background check on all, or just the owner?
It would require a background check on an owner.
On the owner, yeah. The owner that is not licensed as a therapist.
Because a licensed therapist would already be getting that.
Because all the therapists, whether you're an owner or not, because you could be an owner and a therapist, we have that as well.
Got it.
That person has already gone through a background.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to target those that have not gone through a background check.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Reese, give me a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to do so. I would move that we direct staff to bring this back to us as a privileged license to consider all of the items that you've heard from us today, up to and including hours of operation. And so that's the motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese, a second from Councilwoman Weber. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries on.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Madam Mayor, with that, transitioning to Item D2, an update from the Financial Advisory Board.
Good morning, Mayor and council members. Today, I have with you our Chairwoman of the Financial Advisory Board, Tila. She's going to give you her annual report.
All right, thank you so much. Before you begin, Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, I have no public comment on this.
Okay, go ahead, take it away.
Good morning. So you should have before us our annual report of the items that we reviewed this past fiscal year. And I wasn't going to go through them in detail, but just to remind you that we look at the CAFR, we review the budget every year. We also work closely with your internal auditor, reviewing her reports and helping her with any recommendations. And then you also have our plan for the next fiscal year. And I did want to get some feedback from you guys on these items, particularly Number 13 with the labor contracts. So before, prior to last year, as some of you may know who have been on this board a while, they would come before us prior to going to you, and we would review them. And then last year, they weren't really coming before us prior to review, but we were just reviewing them overall for any suggestions that we could provide. And so just wanted to get direction from this council, if it was still a recommendation from you that you would like us to see all of the labor contracts prior to coming to you? And we had talked about maybe we would hold a special meeting if we could, try to get quorum from people, so that we could still have that happen prior to you guys seeing all of those contracts. So any guidance you can provide on that item would be helpful.
Yes, let me ask council, are there any comments, questions from the council? Okay. Mr. Doggada, anything?
Thank you. I just want to say, I am the liaison to this body, and I have, a couple of the meetings have been... I, I just wanna say I am the liaison to this body, and I have, a couple of the meetings have been really informative to me, especially the ones where I was able to stay for longer than about the first forty-five minutes. It is sometimes at the same time as another meeting that I have scheduled. But what I have learned is that the folks on that board have some really extreme knowledge that helps to craft really good decisions. And so it's always fascinating for me, for someone who does not have the same kind of, kind of financial background, to appreciate what you're doing. And so I thank you for that. I know that we need to get you another member, and we had kind of some fits and starts as people were applying, and we were trying to get the pool of applicants to be ones that you were just so happy with. Am I right that you, on the first of August, recommended Mr. Becker?
We did.
Yes, okay. And again, I just wanna say thank you for the work that you're doing because it is very high level, and yet you're all doing it because you really love this community and for no other reason than that. So thank you for your service, appreciate you very much.
No problem.
Me too.
All right, any other questions? No, I wanna say thank you to your board. Everyone works so incredibly hard. I know Richard Jay is in the audience, he's always rooting, rooting you guys on. He gives me a really strong background of what you guys are working on and what you're doing. I really appreciate these. I think we should actually have more. I'd like to see you guys weigh in a little bit more.
Okay.
So, you know, if it's not too much trouble.
No.
Just, yeah, would you let us know?
Yeah, of course.
Because I think there's certain items that we could really use sort of your, your background and your expertise. Thank you so much, Deborah. You're awesome.
And Madam Mayor, can I just clarify too? I, I know that one of the questions that was asked was about whether or not the Fab would have something to do to look at the contracts that are being negotiated. One of the things, I, I'm certainly not opposed to that. One of the things that does concern me is just the timing. We sometimes are challenged to be able to speak publicly about the negotiating process. In the end, all of those agreements must come before this body, and we must vote on them publicly. Certainly, I think if there is an opportunity for your group to see them i- in real time, that would be helpful to us. I don't know if there's a way for us to, given the fact that you only meet once a month, to get them to you in time for them to be reviewed by you, back to us, then agendize. It's just, that's the issue. It's not that anyone doesn't want or appreciate your input. I think we do. But the process of the negotiations, and right now we have, we have eight groups that are bargaining. I think we have agreements that are coming forward in, later in September if they are reached. So it's, it's one of those things where chicken or the egg. So I, I support you reviewing them. I just don't know how to make it as a practical matter happen.
And we're, we're happy to hold special meetings if needed. It's an important item for us. We know it's one of the largest budget items is labor and those, and the benefits. And so if we can hold one prior to, and we can get enough of our members there, we'd be happy to do that as well, just to provide input if they don't fall within a regularly scheduled meeting, so.
Ms. Lochner, what, what, do you have thoughts on this issue? I mean, it, it is difficult, just timing wise, I think.
It's difficult, timing wise, to bring a lot of things to the Financial Advisory Board, but we make it work. They're adaptable. We made a commitment, I believe, that we would schedule a special meeting and try to get a quorum. We have talked about the overall settlement pattern and how negotiations are going with the group, but haven't brought the, the next four that are tentatively agreed to. We have not discussed yet because we haven't, the, the documents aren't public. So we would really have to hold that special meeting once the agenda becomes public. So we have like two days to hold the meeting.
Yeah, not a lot. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Okay, councils or?
Just a suggestion, maybe they could consider changing their meeting. So it regularly falls a few days before the council meeting, like on that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday after the agenda's posted and before the meeting. May or may not be coming on council, but it would at least be right there. And if there's a, a critical item coming to council, be an opportunity. And they, you don't have to go through all this special meeting.
We'll, we'll certainly put that on their next agenda to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, and one of the other special meetings I'd love to have is right before we go into budget. I wanna see detailed recommendations of each department. I think that would be extremely helpful.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, do we need to take a motion on that, Madam Clerk?
You do not need any formal motion because she's just giving you an update.
Okay, so then I get back to you.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I would like to ask council actually for a reconsideration of item B six. This item is noticed as item B six, and then there is a duplication. Information is included on our agenda, however, the numbering is different. So in the essence of transparency for this body, I would ask for a reconsideration of item B six. And then I would be looking for a motion to continue items B six and G two to our next council meeting, so we can agendize these with the correct and same numerology in order to make sure that our constituency understands exactly what council's doing today.
Okay, I would, Madam Mayor, I would...
Go ahead.
I would make a motion to reconsider item B six and, second, I was gonna say and to continue item B six and G two to the next council meeting.
If we can do the reconsideration first?
Oh, sorry. I would make a motion to reconsider B six.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Back at you.
Okay, I would, thank you. I would make a motion to continue item B six and G two to the next council meeting.
All right, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Doer. I have a second from Councilwoman Reese. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that. That will come back at your next council member meeting for deliberation and discussion. With that, Madam Mayor, moving to item D three, discussion on possible action for a sewer bond.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, do you have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I do have public comment, Madam Mayor. First to speak is Steve Wolgas, followed by Tammy Holt Still.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Steve Wolgas. I wanna speak about the Rizwharf expansion. Condition of the Rizwharf expansion from two to four million gallons per day is not to flow any additional effluent into Swan Lake due to the expanded capacity. So what will be done with the extra two million gallons per day? It could go for irrigation in American Flats. The feasibility study for this has just been approved. There are a number of unanswered questions related to it. It could go to a new reservoir at Red Rock. The feasibility study for that has just been approved. Is it really safe and practical? Are there the issues of seismic stability and seepage that need to be addressed? It might go to Bedell Flats for injection, but there are no published results to indicate that this is reliable and practical. There is no schedule when Class A plus water will be available from Rizwharf to support this injection. It could go to Tomwharf, at least the half million gallon per day diversion that they call the Flow Shave. Is, is Tomwharf really gonna need two hundred million moving forward? And is this to address existing problems? Or is this really to support an expanded capability? It could be used, the two million gallons from the expansion could be used to produce Class A plus water. I mean, that's certainly something that would look appealing. A month ago, we were told this was still in the feasibility stage. Would it be produced by Rizwharf or Tomwharf or Tomwharf? Is there a scheme to produce how much, what fraction of the effluent should be produced to this level? And how much would it cost? I'm concerned that, I'm concerned that we don't really have a plan. We have kind of speculative possibilities. Who benefits if the city rushes forward on this with the issues not addressed? Councilmember Doer made the condition that the effluent flow to Swan Lake not exceed the current values, and that the current values, at this point, one and a half million gallons per day average, be reduced by the diversion of half a million gallons per day. This would limit the flow to Swan Lake to one point oh million gallons per day. But Director Flansburgh agreed in the August fourteenth meeting that the flow to Swan Lake would not exceed the current permit, which is two point three five million gallons per day. So I'd like to know if the limit is really gonna be one point oh million gallons per day or two point three five million gallons per day. It seems that this might have a real impact materially on the residents of Swan Lake. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Tammy Holt Still.
Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. I think this fifty-five million dollar bond is definitely the cart before the horse. I think that your staff has proven through the court that they cannot be trusted. They know they were going to flood based on emails with what they had pushed through the sewer plant in two thousand seventeen. So what makes you think that staff is not, is just gonna keep discharging to the lake? I don't trust them. I wasn't even affected except for what I have to live around. But seeing and hearing and understanding what has happened is not right. And turning around and not knowing where your effluent's gonna go, you're, you're gonna put another two million in there again, a day? You know, also, the permit has not been approved by NDEP on September thirteenth. There will be a hearing, an open meeting for the residents to voice their concerns to NDEP. And I would think you would need that taken care of to know for sure that can happen before you go pulling this money. Again, I know it stated that it was for Swan Lake and that Sted sewer plant. However, it's kinda interesting, the amounts are so close to what Stonegate wanted for the infrastructure that they needed. So is it really for doing the sewer plant? Those are questions out there that people are seeing. They're too close, too correlated. It, it all needs to be out in the public where it can be seen really well. I think also because you pulled off the committee, the committee based upon what was stated before would look and make sure that all this stuff is being done. But yet you're holding it off, but you're not holding this off. I think they should be held off together so that the committee can actually have some oversight. And putting this bond into place or going out for this bond right away may not be the right thing to do. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tammy, good comment.
Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment today.
Okay, Deborah, come on back.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. So what we have in front of you today is a resolution of intent to authorize, which would authorize me to go forth and get a bond for the expansion of the Reno Sted Water Reclamation Facility. This is a second step, so if you recall, we did approve a resolution authorizing this to go forward to the Debt Management Commission. We did discuss this at the Debt Management Commission meeting, and they authorized us to continue on. They approved it. So now we're coming back to council, asking you if you want us to proceed in getting the bond in place.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. I do wanna ask to Tammy's point, is there a strict timeline? I mean, I know that we had to do, sort of get it approved because it was a timeline issue. Is there, because I think she makes a good point, having the committee look at it, so.
So the time, the timeline is really related to the state revolving loan fund. They would like to close this in the December timeframe. I, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, they have, they have some of their own kinda needs. This is funding issued by the NDEP.
NDEP, okay. And that has to be done by December?
That was their request. Actually, they wanted us to close it in November, but we couldn't meet that date, so we're closing in early December.
Okay, so theoretically, we could have this committee up and running and being able to weigh in.
Yes, there's, there's several steps involved in issuing a bond. And it, this is not the last time it'll come in front of you. We actually have to come forward with an ordinance as well.
Yeah, it's a process. Okay, thank, thank you so much. Okay, Councilwoman Doer. Oh, Councilwoman Reese, where'd you go?
Well, I'm giving and deferring to my colleague on the left.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. What I was gonna ask is that...
I was gonna ask the same question, thank you, Madam Mayor, about the, having the committee just look at it and look at the broader picture. I was concerned about the, the issue brought up about DEP being, considering, you know, we wouldn't wanna be going issuing bonds if DEP wasn't gonna issue the permit to increase the plant.
So we've, we've met with NDEP, and they are the ones who gave us the timeline for closing and have committed the funds.
Right, but as I've worked at a state agency, I mean, they hold funds in abeyance. That doesn't mean they've awarded them or approved them. I mean, they're going through their public process. So I don't think there's, they're jumping ahead of their public process, so.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. To be clear, on September thirteenth, that is actually the renewal of our existing permit.
Oh.
Our existing permit had lapsed. When that happens, and it, it does happen, the NDEP, you, you run off of the existing permit until they do a new permit. This is the new permit for the existing operation.
Oh.
They will not do the, they will not do the next permit until you've completed, you have your design and you have in, into construction. Then they will look at your, your next permit. And it's just the timing, they were ready to go with the existing permit, so that's what they're doing on September thirteenth.
So that's a little scary. Can you explain just a little bit more about that? So we would go out, bond and do all this, and they would look at it after? Because I know that other big infrastructure projects, like the Southeast Connector, the permitting agency does their work first before we go build it.
Sure, so again, we're, we, we would be operating under the permit that we have, our existing permit. When we, after we finish construction, they will go and, and look at revising the permit. If we're asking for additional revisions, you know, things specifically we'd be concerned with, we'd like discharge Swan Lake, what our other options are. But we would be operating under our, our existing permit through that time.
Right, but I mean, I'm still trying to understand. We wouldn't construct until we had a permit from DEP for the increment?
They certainly review all of the construction plans and, and agree to what we are actually constructing, but as far as renewing the permit, that would happen after construction.
No, but I'm talking about the new permit.
I understand, they would not do that until after the construction.
They, okay, so they permit the plant after it's built?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. One other question, I guess, is, you know, there was a comment made about, they're unclear about the motion that I made or, or Councilwoman Reese made or one of us seconded, which related to discharge of the next increment, the next two million gallons a day into Swan Lake. And so I wanted to be clear on the record that what I meant was the next increment over the two million gallons a day were already authorized. I don't know what we're actually discharging on a day-to-day basis, so I would not know that.
Currently, we are processing about one point eight million gallons a day in the plant. But what we discharge at Swan Lake, especially at this time, is very, very little because it's, it's primarily all being used for irrigation. But during the wintertime months when we didn't have irrigation going on, we would be discharging the difference. As you have directed staff, we will be having the Flow Shave will be in place, and we'll be diverting some of the amount of sewage to Tomwharf for processing, so that will decrease the amount of effluent going to Swan Lake.
Right, and you've mentioned two point three million gallons a day as a max day, not an average day.
Max month, yes.
Or max month, I apologize. Two point three million gallons a day for max month.
Two point three five.
Three five, okay, but I just wanted to be clear. I meant the increment from, you have the authorization to go up to whatever you do, but we were talking about the increment above that. Is that, I just would look to Mr. Reese and terminate my comment.
Thank you. I, I guess ultimately you understand, and the council's direction is to figure out a solution for the North Valleys. One of the things that is part of that package of solutions is upgrading this facility so that we can move forward with the needs of the community who is already maxing out the capacity. And you and I have had some conversation about capacity issues, but you, you, you know, understand what I say. It's part of a series of things that we are trying to do to resolve the issues for the North Valleys, and this is one of them. And this is like step, I don't know, eight in a twenty-step process, I understand. So I'm happy to move forward with it on that basis, and we'll move to do so when the mayor asks for the question.
A follow-up question, thank you, Madam Mayor, is just the process. Our CFO mentioned that we're discussing this today with authorization, but can you tell us about the next steps? You said there's a number more steps, including an ordinance. And when, when would that occur?
So I believe the, the ordinance would be coming back to you in maybe October, November. I'd have to go pull the calendar of events again to see exactly when. So what this does is this authorizes me to hire the bond counsel and the financial advisor and start doing the documents, the legal documents, which lead to the bond ordinance. Then the bond ordinance comes back to council, that's really is the authorization to issue the bond, in which case, and it has all the terms in there, kind of outlined with maximum interest rates, maximum dollar amounts, and that comes back to council, and then, of course, then you adopt the ordinance.
So we would have time to have the North Valleys Committee meet one or two or more times before October slash November, whenever you bring this back.
Yeah, and I can, I can send out and let you know what the calendar says when the ordinance, when the next council meeting would be. But this is, you know, the, this is the step that allows me to get the bond counsel working on all the legal documents and getting the underwriter in place and the financial advisor and all the, the financial information we need to present in order to sell the bonds. And, and actually, you don't have to do quite as large of a process, because we don't have to do an official statement, because it's not going out to the public. It's a, it's a private placement essentially with the state. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Doer.
Thank you very much. So clarification, so this is for you to do what you just said, get bond counsel and do the necessary prep work. Then it would come in draft form to us, you said, in October?
I'd have to get you the actual dates. We have a calendar that leads all the way out to closing, which I can send all of you the, the calendar of events of all the different things that we do.
Okay, so at the very least, October, November, because we've got to do it twice. We have to...
Yeah, you have to adopt the ordinance, right? And then you have to approve it, right?
Okay, so we've got a couple of months for this other group to review it. Something red flag-ish comes up, we can, we can stop the process. We have a couple of steps in order to do that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I did want to just assure you that this is, the documents and everything are related to the expansion of the Reno Sted water reclamation facility. It's not for any other infrastructure.
Right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to send it to Vice Mayor, give me a minute. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you so much. I'd like to ask Mr. Flansburgh, his opinion on this. It's something that needs to move forward, I think, quicker than what we want to do, what we're suggesting. And to get the ball rolling, I think it only makes sense that we would vote on this today and still have the, what you're suggesting. Okay, thanks, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I would agree, that this still, this is, this is part of the process that we need. Again, the reason for doing this bond is because it gives us access to much slower interest rates. I think we did a quick calculation of at least over $3 million in savings of interest alone for these rates versus what we might expect otherwise. So I think it's prudent to do that. And again, we'll have time to review this with the subcommittee as chosen by council prior to adoption.
And so if the subcommittee says we recommend not going forward with this, there's still plenty of time to back it up.
That's correct.
All right, did everyone hear that? On the record, got you. Okay, give me a motion.
Yep.
Councilwoman Doer.
And just to get this on the record too, Mr. Flansburgh, we've already given direction, and I'm presuming that in the ordinance, when it comes forward, and this, I guess, is for our legal staff do, that they would include whereas is that speak to what we've already adopted and any other direction from the committee, such as the A-plus water discharge to Swan Lake, those kind of conditions? So is that correct? Very good. All right, well, with that, I would move, if that's the desire of the body, on D3, to move with the resolution of intent proposing the issuance of authorizing publication of notices relating to general obligation sewer bonds and the maximum principal amount of $55 million for the purpose of financing sewage projects for the city.
All right, thank you so much. I have a motion from Councilwoman Doer, a second from Councilwoman Reese. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. If anyone from the Fab here, raise your hand. Or from Debra's appointment, or department? Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Good job. Okay.
Madam Mayor, with that, transitioning to item D4, Presentation and Update by Reno Youth Sports Association. Brad Betker is present.
All right.
As well as Parks Department.
Good morning, for the record, Jeff Mann, Parks Recreation and Community Services. As you're aware, the city has had a, an agreement with the Reno Youth Sports Association, RYSA, for operation and programming of our youth athletic fields since 2000, so we're in our 19th year. Part of the agreement is that RYSA will do an update to city council, so our president is the current, or president is the current Chair Brad Betker and members of the council, and I'll, their commission, and I'll turn it over to Brad.
Okay, thank you so much, Brad. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we have none on this.
Okay, great. All right, Brad, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, we're excited to see you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Brad Betker, excuse me, and I'm here to do a presentation for the Reno Youth Sports Association, RYSA for short. So, next slide, please. RYSA Executive Board is made up of seven volunteer board members, which six are here today. We're a diverse board, we have representing four different sports. We expanded our board about the last four to five years to increase it to be even more diverse, to be more transparent, and to, to have every league that we could, or excuse me, every sport represented and have a voice. Next slide, please. So currently, the Reno Youth Sports Association has 22 leagues. Here's the breakup, we have baseball, softball, soccer, football, also other, which is Special Olympics, High Sierra Lacrosse, Coral Academy of Science, Reno Zephyr Rugby, and Northern Nevada Sports and Rec. Again, it's very diverse, and we have to have the requirements for each sport. All the fields are different, almost majority of them, all different, they have to be done for practicing and for, for game play. So this is our makeup. Next slide, please. So currently, who's, who's playing with RYSA? Of the 22 leagues, we have 10,328 annual members and growing. Just like, we've been here for a couple hours, seeing all the growth and stuff that's happening within the city, it's only going to continue to grow. We permit 104 city Reno fields. Again, the breakup is here for baseball, for softball, for soccer, for football, and the other, which we mentioned in the previous slide. We don't have enough fields for what we're trying to have the people participate in. Our fields are overused. I think the council's aware of that. It's over 145 to 155% over usage on fields. So what are we going to do about it? We've been trying to meet with the requirements to partner with the city so that we can have additional fields for different additional sports. For instance, football has no home. They practice on softball fields, baseball fields, and soccer fields. Kind of a shame that, you know, people can have, you know, not even have a field to practice the sport that they want, they want to play. Next slide, please. So our annual budget, this is kind of, I know you guys got this before the presentation, this basically breaks down what we spend our money on. We have been spending a tremendous amount of money with, on field, excuse me, on field aeration and fertilization. We did, as Jeff Mann mentioned with the agreement, that we re- reauthorized, have, this, these fees will go down, we've been spending, but we did spend that money. So just so the council and the mayor's aware, since 2007, the Reno Youth Sports Association has spent $942,000 on aeration and fertilization. This comes directly from player fees, which comes from families, players, and kids. That's our source of income. Now, we have negotiated, and Jeff is helping us out with doing some of the, of these required maintenance and aeration, so that will help save us some money. Wish we could have saved a little sooner, that's what, I'm going to represent the board here. We could have, probably have partnered and added some additional fields, which would have been nice. So now, we are, as you can see the questions here, I mean, excuse me, on the budgeting, that what the monies we spend, we don't make a profit. We don't, the monies all goes through, this is kind of from August of last year to August of this year, so it's a little bit tainted for the year, we do not make money. We've been losing money for the last several years. Next slide, please. So our accomplishments with the Reno Youth Sports Association, I'm very proud to serve with the other six executive board members. Again, we're volunteers, we help the city out, we have a great relationship with the Parks Department, and we are saving the city, and I think it's a great model that other cities should do. We are the people that use the fields, we know what needs to be done, and we communicate that with the Parks Department and the city. We work in collaboration throughout various sports to build partnerships within the leagues, just so the council's aware and the mayor, we have people, not just one league is on one field. So for instance, if you take the Terrace Complex, there might be four different leagues up there during one week. So we're not giving the fields any rest whatsoever. We have reports, they're supposed to be resting at least one day a week. They have, they're not, we use them seven days a week, and sunup to sundown, and then some with lights. Next slide, please. So the Reno Youth Sports Association's primary mission is to foster, enhance, and be a positive influence for all youth and Reno sports activities within the city of Reno. Our purpose is to establish and allocate membership and user fees for the benefit of our membership while coordinating the usage of our sports facilities. Again, I think we do a really good job, the volunteers, on our executive board, we have the right people in the right spot. So we're here to look for an answer, for some help in getting more fields. We really need to, especially with the growth that's happening, it's a necessity. Otherwise, we're going to have to turn people away. With that, we'll open it up for any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Brad. Okay, I was looking at some of your numbers, you are exactly right, we absolutely need more better parks and better fields, because you know how the region is growing, and it's so critical to our, our children that live here, right?
Yes.
You guys do a phenomenal job, I was so impressed whenever I sat down with you. I am going to sit down with you again and look at some ideas on how we're going to get more fields in our parks. I know Vice Mayor Doer has really been pushing at the Flood Project, and there's some, some really great land out there.
Yes.
So we are going to need your, your help at the table.
Okay.
Anyway, one thing I do want to bring up really quickly is, you had on there, I think it was about $36,000 for the restrooms, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I think you said that that started in 2007?
It did, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I want, I want to, for, you know, this council that doesn't know the sort of history.
Yes.
That was, you took that over from the city in the recession, because you wanted to make sure that that was continuing to be serviced, am I right?
Correct. Jeff Mann came to us when his Parks staff was decimated in 2007, and we had to have a solution, we couldn't use the fields, so we had 11 locations that needed to be serviced and cleaned. So actually, I was not the chairman at the time, but that was one of the tasks that I, I took on, was to find a third-party, somebody that would clean 11 restrooms daily. We found Lees Janitorial, they were literally, they charged at the start $3,000 to clean 11 bathrooms. I mean, less, it was just amazing, $100 a day. How you can clean 11, everything else, Jani Clean was like $11,000. We got like six or seven bids, the next cheapest bid we had was almost $8,500. So anyway, so we, we took over these restrooms, we have paid since 2007, our treasurer did come up with the numbers, $327,000 in restroom costs. Again, directly from membership, which is directly from fees. So with the bathroom costs and the aeration fertilization, we're at 1.2, 1.2, about $1,270,000 that we have spent out of, out of player fees, that come from families.
We greatly appreciate your, your partnership. That was incredibly kind of you to continue doing that for all those years. And that really should have been a city service. And so I think, you know, coming back with your new contract, I would like to see that amended to make sure, and, and one of the reasons too, I know that, that janitorial service is, I don't think, they're not going to be doing the servicing any longer, and those fees have gone up considerably, and so I just wanted to point that out there. But I appreciate your partnership, and I do think that's something in the contract that should be amended, so, and that will be in December, I believe.
Yes.
I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Vice Mayor Doer.
Yeah, thank you, thanks so much for introducing this too, and thanks for everything that you and the whole team does. I happen to live near Moana and drive by that set of fields frequently, and they're often packed. So kudos to everyone who's out there doing their thing. I was reappointed to the Flood Board this year, appointed for the first time, and I've already met with the staff, asked them to have an agenda item on this, and I already met with them last week for about an hour to discuss what it would take to convert the 100 or so acres, it might be 50 of 100 acres the Flood Project owns, on Mill and McCarran. And after my conversation with them, we decided maybe in October timeframe for their meeting. And so what I want to do is put that out there and encourage you to come and attend that meeting, as well as any number of others. One of the issues is that the land belongs to the Flood Project, which is Reno Sparks, Washoe County. But there's a perception that this would be a Reno, a Reno project, not a Reno, Washoe County Sparks project. So this is something I'd like to talk to you about offline, and also make sure that we have people from Reno Sparks and Washoe County unincorporated, so that the Flood Project can get a better feel for who this actually would serve. I want to, I understand it already came to the Flood Project a couple of years ago, and it was denied, and it was brought up as a traction project, Trekkie River Action Project, and that's because, apparently at the time, I haven't seen the application, the group was asking for money from the Flood Project as well as use of the land. And I think this proposal might be a little different. So I told them it would not be a traction project, it would be more of a, a use of land type lease and that kind of thing. So a little bit different than maybe what you were thinking about before, or those that were involved before. And so the key messages here are, working really hard on it, I need your support, I'd like to stand, set up some pre-meetings.
Yes.
So that we can do the best job we can, so the Flood Project membership can make the best decision, they can. And their decision would probably be a policy decision that would then go back to staff and to the Technical Advisory Committee for further input. Okay, so one of the biggest issues for them was at some point, they're going to need to use that land to build their levee. And they don't know exactly the footprint of the levee, and they don't know the timing. It sounded like the soonest would be six or seven years. And so I said, well, we don't want another, it's already been 10 years since we acquired the land or more. We don't want another 10 years to go by with this land sitting idle. They're most concerned about it being a temporary versus permanent use. So those are some of the issues, and thank you, council, for indulging, but this will be, you know, I'm sure a whole council initiative.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Betker, thank you for the presentation. I have had the privilege of having children who've grown up on all of those fields and was the commissioner for the Sierra Youth Football League, and so it's one of those things where probably if you don't have kids who are doing those things, you don't really know what the RYSA is doing. And I thank you for standing in the gap in that way. What I don't totally understand, because I'm new to this, is entirely where the money comes in from and then how it's spent. And, and so just humor me in as much as, what I would like to see happen as you are moving forward in whatever projects you're doing on behalf of this community, is that we look for whatever assistance the city can be to you to provide, you know, financial, for example, our Audit Department could help you to make sure that the money that you're taking in is going to the right places. I don't know who you have that helps you with your financial books, I assume you're some kind of a nonprofit, or you're set up in such a way that would have accounting and tax assistance, but let our folks help you in that regard. So that could be the Financial Advisory Board who was here this morning, who could help you to figure out. It could be our Audit Department. Those are the kind of things that I want to come alongside you and help you accomplish, so that we know that when we take in the money that we are from parents, which is where it's coming from. where it's coming from, that it's going into the things that it's supposed to go into, like aeration, like improvements to lights, cleaning bathrooms, all those things. And if there are things that we have to take back, because we need to do that, as the mayor suggested, let us do that too. I hope that makes sense. What I'm basically saying is, I want to help you to be the most successful that you all can be.
It is.
And I am having a hard time being able to do that, because I don't really know, like, the budget, where it comes from, where, where the money really is, so just help us to help you do that.
Okay. The money, the money comes in through, we're a pass-through. We, we collect the money and basically give it to the city. For, for lights, like I said, we were doing it for, for players, in the contract that Jeff Mann suggested, stated that we, we renegotiated, we collect those fees, take them in and take them out, so it's just money in, money out. We do our nonprofit 501(c)(3) in good standing, that we do have, we pay very minimal for how much money we take in for taxes, we have a, one of the CPA's local helps us out, because he charges us a couple thousand dollars a year, which is a bargain compared to what, you know, would be in the outside. So, we, we're just a pass-through, we help the city, that I don't have to have employees, like I said, we're doing the permitting, I mean, I encourage you guys to come to one of our meetings for spring or fall to see the permitting process. Everybody turns in requests, and we have to figure out and put the pie together. I mean, it's, it's, the spreadsheets are incredible, incredible. Yes.
All right, any other further questions? Seeing that there and then, thank you so much for being here.
All right.
We don't have to take any action, we really appreciate what you're doing.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, council.
Take care.
Madam Mayor, transitioning to Item D5, an update regarding RTC Audi Wells multimodal project.
All right, fantastic. I assume we have the gang all here, right?
We do.
Gang's all here. Hi, the gang's all here.
Gang's all here.
Okay, well, we're certainly looking forward to this presentation, this is super exciting.
Super exciting.
Love it, love it, love it. Okay, take it away, Carrie.
Carrie Kosky, Engineering Manager, Capital Projects. Today, before you, we are, as the mayor said, very excited to bring this item to you today. The, 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 the item is a confirmation of the major elements of the RTC project, Audi Wells multimodal, and we're also asking for a selection of a council member to serve as our liaison for the duration of the project. RTC is here today, along with their design team, Stan Tech Consultants, and they are here to provide you with a presentation, and they're going to highlight the major items. Mr. Brian Stewart's going to go ahead and give the presentation, and we can then, after the presentation, if you'd like, I would go into some additional detail, details about the eight major elements that we're asking for confirmation. So, I will take it, I will let Mr. Brian Stewart have the, have the floor.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor, thank you for having me today. Brian Stewart, Director of Engineering for the RTC. I also want to thank Carrie Kosky and John Flansburgh for being our, such great partners in moving these projects along. Another great project for our region is the Audi Wells project, that I'll go through some highlights here for you today, and then as Carrie articulated, we'll get into some details and some questions for you. Design is currently underway for the project. Let's see, can I just advance? All right, so the purpose and need for the Audi Wells, it's, it's a complete street project and an enhancement project that is going to create a walkable connect to communities between Sparks and Reno, more livable, safer, vibrant corridor with respect to the dedicated areas for pedestrians, for bikes, and for transit and, and vehicles. And then obviously, foster the economic development in the corridor, as we invest the, the public's money into those improvements. We'll also have the ADA compliance, of course, and then, like I said, there's a whole slew of where these people will be using the corridor as a complete street enhancement. Want to thank this board for the support of the project in, in our local agreement that was approved last year, and so we've moved this along. We're building on the approved corridor plan that was developed a number of years ago, and we're really focused on creating those divisions in this corridor where everybody can safely travel to their destinations and connecting the communities. This will deliver a sustainable, safer community resource for us. Give you the project map, basically from I-80 in the south and on the west, and moving over to Pyramid Way in, in Sparks. I'll walk you through a couple of slides here that are going to show cross-sections at certain ways, we could, we'll get into the details a little bit of what those cross-sections show, but I just want to give you that, that sense of what's going on. We're really focused in the city of Reno today, and what's going on there, so we'll start at the south end of the project there, and show you what the cross-section looked like, as of the design of where we're at, and working through a lot of the constraints and the public comments that we received, and working through some of the other agencies that are in this corridor. So from I-80 to Ninth Street, here's the typical cross-section that you might see. You might say, whoa, wait a second, there's a multi-use path there. Yes, that's true, we've looked at that and decided that a multi-use path through there is, is what's going to work, considering the constraints in this area. The multi-use path allows us to connect to the existing UNR path that's right adjacent to I-80 there, and it also allows us to take advantage of the constrained corridor and add some landscaping, but yet still preserve some needed parking that's in the corridor. So the next slide that I'll go to is where this parking is going to be retained in the corridor, and it was important that we did not take this parking, because it's used almost all the time, you go through Audi Wells and you'll see that people are using that. And it's on the west side of the, of the cross-section there, you'll see it says the parking lane. Again, we couldn't get the bike pass in there as dedicated on the road section, so the multi-use path is what is proposed to go from the south end of the project to eighty all the way to Sutro. Here's the cross-section that is Sutro from Reno to Sparks, so this is where you'll see the race cycle track, which is exciting to see that option come forward and be able to provide that safe corridor for the cyclist to connect between Sparks and Reno. And then in Sparks, between Rock and Pyramid, the same cross-section continuity, we really wanted to try to get that as much as possible, to have these continuous cross-sections through the three-point-five mile corridor that you have in front of you. Here's our schedule and what you've seen, and like I said, thanks to this board for the support, as we've gone through the corridor study, we've done the preliminary design, and we're in that September timeframe with the sixty percent, ready to get some input, some good input from this board, so that we can move this great project forward. Getting into the proposed design concept from the landscaping and lighting components, it's been a lot of hard work with respect to that, you can see that in your board report, is all the meetings and getting the input and trying to get the right landscaping and lighting in this corridor that works for the constraints that are there, which would be budgetary, obviously, as far as maintaining new features and new stuff, as well as just the limited space in the right of way. And so what you'll see is, there'll be a combination of shade trees that are the larger thirty-to-forty-foot canopy to get some nice shading in there, there'll be interspersed with some smaller trees, and then their, their spacing is there with respect to the lighting. You'll have two lighting types, you'll have the street lighting, that actually are the big cobra heads that actually light the streetway, and then you'll have the pedestrian way lighting, and I'll show you those here in another couple of slides. And then you, of course, have the median in this area, so that safer for turns and everything. So the lighting concept that the design team and working with the staff is a, to use a Nevada Energy-approved style under the existing maintenance agreement that the city of Reno has with NV Energy, and so looking at the Candela type of style for the pedestrian lights that would be put on the multi-use path, and then on the cycle track where, and, and the sidewalk areas where you'll have those pedestrians and need that, that lighting. Just a quick view of what they do, LEDs or the big cobra heads with new LED lights, which obviously are more efficient in electricity. We also have screen walls along this corridor, there's about four thousand feet of screen walls that will go, they're going to be six foot high. We're proposed that we don't want these to be a maintenance nightmare, so they're going to be durable, low maintenance, they'll be textured for the resistance, for graffiti, and then using the current sort of color that the city maintenance crews have for anti-graffiti type of resistance, and trying to maintain that it won't have a lot of issues and liability out there with respect to that. One of the other things in this project was, as we started looking at it, is the existing bridge, pedestrian bridge that is there at Silverada and Audi Wells, and, you know, it's, it's a resource that's been there a long time, but we did a, a study on that, and we wanted to know, you know, what kind of shape it is, and, and can it function still? And it is not ADA-compatible, and so the ADA access for the new project will be at street level with fully pedestrian activated sensors that are audible and that stuff, so that's what the staff and, and RTC is recommending, we move forward with that. And then that would give case that the, the bridge that is old and, and not in, in great shape could be removed, and RTC supports being able to remove that, and that would leave where the spirals come down an open space of where the future city Reno could take advantage of that open space in the project of, of what they would like to see, and RTC working with you in that. These are just some slides here to show you that's existing corridor and what's there, and I'll move to the next slide, we'll show you where we're going with respect to that. So you see the medians, you see the lights, and you see the safer corridors for all the users in the, in the system. That's about a five-year tree maturity right there, so pretty much after we, you know, finished the project, and then the last slide being what it would look like in, in a twenty-year With that, I'd like to answer any questions you might have on the technical side, and work with Carrie here to answer any questions you might have on the city side.
All right, great job, you actually finished two minutes and thirty seconds ahead, so.
Try to go quickly.
Nicely done. Okay, any questions from council members? Go ahead, Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's, been working with RTC for quite a few years now, I think, just after being elected to office, they brought forward the, the concept and the design that this was going to take place on, and the community's been very excited to see us moving forward continuously on this project, but also appreciate the constant community outreach in terms of informing them, in terms that this project hasn't went away, that it's still moving forward. As a kid growing up, not too far from, from the neighborhoods here, it was always upon me to see that Audi was, was what it was, and it was in the middle of the city with no sidewalks, no nothing, and just the condition it is, and that, that in many different ways said a lot in terms of trying to make the community feel proud of itself, when it's hard to do that with so much of kind of a, of them feeling as though things weren't necessarily improving around them. So this is very, very exciting to see that happen. And so, working with them, working with Councilman Jordan and the staff, I think we've come a, we've come a long way in terms of making adjustments to what was presented back in two thousand and thirteen to where we are today. They were able to make some amendments and changes to make sure that this project was completed all the way from I-80 down to Pyramid, which we, which I appreciated. As there was pointed out in the project in the PowerPoint, was the idea of the parking that we kept on the west side of Audi, and one of the main reasons was that, and this is maybe another discussion in terms of what we want to see in terms of working with RSEVA, is the RSEVA, if we wanted to keep the design the way it was from Sutro to, from Ninth to Sutro, that they would lose parking spaces. I think that's another conversation outside of this, but we also moved the landscape from the east side to the west side, because we wanted to make sure that the community saw the improvements, not just a, an empty parking lot over several, several months, and that's a discussion to have with RSEVA in terms of making sure that they are held to make improvements when they make those changes on a livestock event center, and that's something I'd like to talk to the rest of the council about, in, in terms of making sure that we hold them accountable, so the residents around that neighborhood don't just see an empty parking lot during large segments of, of the, of the year. In addition to that, it was great to see that, we all know that the built environment has a direct impact on the overall health, it's, everyone on here in our room understands that, that community just by looking up the zip code knows that there's some huge health disparities in that community in terms of lack of, of, of infrastructure, of obesity issues, diabetes issues, and a lot of those issues are directly can be impacted and to betterment if they have better infrastructure like these multimodal and raised tracks, and so this is great in terms of having some avenues and opportunities for that community there as well. I could keep talking, I know we have three minutes, but, but maybe we could circle back before this is done, and hear from the rest of the council, so reserve my comments for the next, next go-around. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thanks so much, good comments, Councilman, very good. All right, Councilman Doer, three minutes.
Yep, thank you. Thanks so much for being here, I had a chance to have a specific briefing on this project, there were a number of people in attendance, and had a lot of questions, got most of them answered. First, I just wanted to compliment you on the inclusion of the trees, you know, you have one of the greatest infrastructure impacts on our whole community, Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. You are the people who are spending the bucks, you're redoing all the arteries, you know, it's an incredible thing, so the fact that you're including the trees, which are so very important, is very important to me, and I know the rest of the council. The related question on that, though, is that I know Sparks does not have tree standards, we, we already have tree standards, and we're trying to improve those. Is the, have you talked to Sparks about that, and so we can have some continuity on this, this road? And number two, I, about, around the area where it transitions from Reno to Sparks, there is a lot of fencing on the south side, and I think that's one of the things that, you know, really adds to the lack of appeal in that general area, it's just a chain-link fence, some of it's really tilted over, you know, some of it's gone, some has holes, it's, it's just not very attractive. And I wondered, and I think I heard the answer to this question in my briefings, but I'm not sure, so my question is, trees, same Reno-Sparks, two, we're going to use the suspended sidewalk, number three, which I didn't mention, but I'm hoping to get an answer, number three, what's your plans for the fencing?
Thank you, thanks, Councilmember, for that question. So first of all, the trees being the same between Reno and Sparks, Sparks is on board to carry that continuity through the corridor, so absolutely support that. The fencing, I went over it really quickly, is, you know, proposing putting the concrete fencing in that's anti-graffiti and stuff, that's basically going to be from Sutro to Silverada.
Yeah.
And that's about, yeah, four thousand feet of that, that fencing. And then if you could remind me of number two.
I just wondered, you know, this has been a big debate, we're hopefully coming to closure in our downtown streetscape on that, but I'm looking for, you know, we can't get big trees unless we provide enough dirt, so what, do you have plans for that?
Yeah, we, we're not proposing using any of the, the Silva cells or those type of concept or, or suspended concrete in this project, we do have a lot more space with respect to the actual landscaping strips, and so there's more of that area for those roots to really grab onto and, and grow, and so we're feeling pretty confident that we can get a healthy tree canopy in that corridor.
Okay, because that's a very legitimate way to go, and that's, I just wanted to make sure that one way or the other, you know, there's enough room for them to grow. All right, well, the mayor stepped out, so I'm going to open it for further questions from the council. Councilman Jordan.
Thank you very much, thank you for the RTC staff for, for being here. I know that this is your first kind of formal presentation to us on this, but we know there have been many, many, many meetings that have led to this day, many with the neighbors and with Councilmember Delgado's leadership, who has been intimately involved with this project from the beginning. It's nice to see, we've, we've had some meetings to talk about maybe some potential process changes, to maybe avoid some of the sticking points we had on Virginia Street, and I think we have come up with some really good streamlining processes with regards to this that will help to mitigate and, and hopefully prevent that from happening. I will remind everybody that I will remind everybody that, I don't know how many of you went to the Village on Sage Street opening and did you marvel at the Fourth Prater project? It is, it is beautiful and the trees aren't matured yet and so it's got so much more to give. And I just drove down that street just marveling at what sidewalks and improved roadway and consistent lighting can do for an entire area. And that makes me excited for this project because I can see what it's going to do for this. I do agree with Councilmember Delgado about the staying consistent with the improvements on the RSCVA property. I would hope they would want those for those individuals attending events at their property 'cause it gets darn hot, having to walk to get in or get to your car and that sort of thing. So it would be nice to have that. But one of the things that we did suggest is a streamline on these projects with RTC and I'll put it out here 'cause I don't know when we're supposed to actually make these suggestions and something I think is a good adoption for the city on the whole, for all of our boards, is for communications meeting suggestions to flow through the ward representative who oversees the particular ward in which this resides. In this case, it's also an RTC commissioner. So any council members who have questions, comments, concerns, maybe direct those to the council member first, which could probably mitigate a lot of staff time, repetition, confusion of messaging, confusion of direction. And I thought that was a really good suggestion, which actually I think we should probably adopt on all of our boards, just for staff's sanity and moving things along consistently. So, anyway, kudos to where you are. You're in great hands with Councilmember Delgado. He will take wonderful care of his community. I think the biggest decision is gonna be the bridge. I truly do, is do you take it down or do you leave it up?
The crossover.
The crossover. Because it's, I think we're looking into volumes to see how many people actually use it anymore, but it's not ADA compliant. It's, it's got a lot of maintenance issues, so I don't know. I don't know where that falls and the community and Councilmember Delgado will keep their finger on that pulse. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Delgado.
Yeah, maybe I was just hoping for if Carrie Kosky wants to swing up here in terms of give some comments to the overall project and some of those changes and maybe can speak to the bridge. We've had long discussions about that as well.
Sure. Carrie Kosky, Engineering Manager, Capital Projects. Great questions. The, the bridge itself does have some, it's about, it's in fair condition. And in order to, if we were to keep the bridge, it would cost the city around $500,000 within the next 10 years. RTC, well, staff has worked with RTC and RTC staff and they have offered to go ahead and include that into the project and that would be our recommendation. We do have, like Mr. Stewart showed, we do have some areas set aside where we could go ahead and put the, like a little landscaping area or something in that area. The bridge itself was dedicated to a police officer back in 1970. The police officer, Officer Fredrickson, I believe it was his name, you can see the plaque on the bridge. We have, city staff has reached out to that particular family and he has since deceased, but the family is in support, well, yes, we explained that the possibility of removing the bridge and the daughter is in support of speaking to us about the future of the plaque, whether we would put it over in one of these areas that are dedicated for landscaping or if we would actually present it to her. So it, it does have some structural, structural issues.
Yeah, I'm a minute left. Thank you, Carrie. With respect to the bridge, same thing. I know it's probably something in terms of maintenance in overall. My hope is that the council would help be supportive of looking at maybe some art fixtures in those two key corners as opportunities to celebrate the gateway into the community from the transitioning from Sparks into Reno. The long-term maintenance, I think, is pretty high and my relationship with the community, it's not so much a huge memorial piece that's gonna be a lot of consternation around. It's, again, it's a lot of people now cross the street, they don't necessarily use the bridge anymore. I know as a kid growing up, I'd write down it, right, and write back of it, but it's, even at that point now, it's not nearly used as much as it once was in the days. But it's, of course, due to with community pride that we make sure that there's something there with those voided spaces and the hope is working with the council and everyone else in terms of seeing some artifacts or other opportunities to celebrate the community and its gateway into the process. With that being said, Madam Vice Mayor, I think the community, the RTC, our staff, done a great job moving through the process. I'm excited for it to continue to move forward. Carrie, thank you so much for leading the cause and asking the right questions and reassuring that this project is, is a great one and I think it's probably gonna be the first multimodal racetrack in our urban community.
Yes.
That's something that we can, again, model and look at and be proud of and see how we can further embed throughout the city of Reno.
Yes, yes. Okay, are there any other council members would like to weigh in? I'll just close with the saying that I'm, I am very excited about this project because in many ways, and again, it's funny, but it goes back to the lack of treason art. It looks like a, not as beautiful as it could look and this is a key urban, you know, artery and it really needs to reflect who we are. And that's why it actually just, I just got chills when I was thinking about the improvements that are gonna be made and I think it will really elevate the entire community, you know, in terms of, they get that too. Not just people that have HOAs, not just people that have more money, let's say, or, you know, have more sway, but everyone in our community is valuable and they all get to have a good road. And in fact, this will probably be one of our best roads in terms of this racetrack. One comment on the trees, I noticed, I didn't know until you put it up, but there was a 30-foot spacing listed. Those, those guidelines are in flux and I just wanted to put a marker that what we've said on the downtown streetscape is it said 20 to 30 feet on average. You know, it's not, I know engineers would like it to be, get the ruler out and have it exactly be 30 feet.
Right.
But that might not be appropriate, you know, with the various issues there. And number two, I just wanted to encourage you to lean on the Urban Forester as you have. I think there was an amazing partnership, which RTC didn't necessarily get to see, but I know our Public Works did with the Q and D construction on Old Southwest Reno and replacing the curb and gutter and the sidewalks. You know, our amazing partnership has evolved with our Urban Forester on how to place trees, save trees and those kind of things. And I'm just wondering about the art. Do we need to do 2% for art? You know, I was thinking we need to bring that ordinance back because it doesn't specifically speak to RTC, but I just wondered, you could speak to it.
Brian Stewart, Director of Engineering for RTC. Great question with respect to the art. RTC is being consistent. This is a fuel tax project of which we're using 100% fuel tax to fund this project. As you know, we've had these discussions before, but very consistent with respect that the fuel tax isn't, talks about in NRS to fund art with respect to that. So we're proposing to partner with the city and provide what we can as far as the transportation elements and then hopefully work together as far as to get a good project out there.
So in that statute, it doesn't actually say amount or it just says have art. Is that the idea?
The actual NRS does not, you know, allow fuel tax to be used for art.
Oh, does not? Oh, that's almost like the opposite of what I thought you said.
It's not articulated that it is allowed use.
Okay, so that's just something we've gotta consider here, especially if we wanna upgrade the whole corridor. You know, it needs art like the rest of the town, you know? So, okay, all right, well, Madam Mayor's back. I think we're done with our round of questioning, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else? That there are none. Madam Clerk, do you need a motion for this?
No. Madam Mayor, we can take action, yes.
Okay. All right, then I'm gonna hand it to Councilwoman Jordan to give me a motion.
Move to accept.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion from Councilwoman Jordan and a second from Councilman Delgado, both of our representatives on the RTC. All those in favor, say aye.
Did you have something?
Aye.
Hold on a second, Madam Mayor, sorry. Carrie, did you?
I just wanted to clarify, Carrie Kosky, Engineering Manager, the council liaison is in the motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Who is it?
Councilwoman Delgado was mentioned.
Councilman Delgado, you'll be the representative. You'll be rep.
Sounds right.
I like it.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, good job. Thanks so much. We're looking forward to it.
Yes.
The only thing I didn't get to ask, when are we starting exactly? Like, when are we gonna see the, the, ta-da?
When do we start construction?
2021.
2021, okay. All right, thanks, everyone. Where's Lee? Where's your fearless leader?
She was not able to.
Okay, well, you brought enough, so you covered all bases, so don't worry about it. All right, bye. Okay, Madam Clerk, back on you.
Madam Mayor, next item is D-7, an update regarding medical and recreational marijuana dispensary and cultivation licensing and public safety activity in Reno since legalization in 2015.
Okay, it's all you, Tommy. We wanna see some flair with this presentation and I don't know if any of you are following what's happening in Southern Nevada. It's been pretty interesting to read a lot of the articles happening out of Nevada Indy on marijuana. So, thank you, Tommy, for being here. We're excited that you're here.
Well, thank you for having me and I apologize if I don't live up to your expectations of flair. I'll try my best, but...
We're just kind of, we're trying to put a little pressure on you.
I know, appreciate it. I was already sweating enough back there and now I gotta like put on a show here.
You'll be great.
For the record, Tom Robinson, Deputy Chief of the Reno Police Department here on behalf of Chief Soto and the men and women of the Reno Police Department. I have, where's the clicker? Here we go.
Get away from you. Exactly. We've been taking the clicker back after every speaker 'cause someone took our last one.
Oh, really? Okay, I'll try not to take this. I have a very quick presentation here on the updates on marijuana. Before I started, I want to give you some background. June 2001 is when use and possession for medical purposes was decriminalized. Also, that same year, possession of up to one ounce of non-medical marijuana became a misdemeanor. So before that, it was a felony and we did a lot of, we made a lot of arrests for possession of marijuana and after that, it was a misdemeanor, so we frequently cite and we have been since then. In 2013, state legalized commercial medical marijuana. And in July of 2015, the city issued its first business license to a medical marijuana retail store, which opened a month later. By July 2017, we had four stores and in July of 2017, all four retail stores were approved for the early start retail program. And August 2018, all four retail stores were issued regular retail licenses. What that means is they sell both medical marijuana and what is called recreational marijuana or retail marijuana, over 21 usage without a medical card. Currently, we have four retail stores that sell both medical and recreational marijuana. We have nine cultivation facilities that do both and two that just do medical. And we have one medical marijuana production, manufacturing facility. Those facilities are the ones that do the extractions and create the edibles and those kind of products. And we have eight medical and five recreational marijuana production facilities. And in the approval process, we have four recreational-only marijuana retail stores. I know one is ready, I visited it a couple of weeks ago. Two recreational marijuana cultivation facilities and two recreational marijuana production Next couple of slides, I'll talk about some of, some trends and some potential indicators. The first one I wanted to talk about was our arrests or, and/or citations for charges having to do with marijuana, including trafficking, possession, providing to a minor and I believe usage is covered under here too. 2014 was the last year before we had retail, I'm sorry, medical marijuana stores and so the decline is kind of obvious. We would see this downward trend that we're seeing now. Arrests and sites for consuming marijuana in public. I want to say that the law was enacted in 2016, which is why we have no arrests prior to that. And you could see this upward trend occurring. I think for 2019, we're on pace to either match or come close to 2018 in terms of arrests or sites for consuming marijuana in public. This slide depicts all investigations that have a keyword of marijuana. We did a keyword search in our report management system and the trend is down and it'll probably either, I imagine it'll go down a few more points here in the next couple of years and then probably level off. The DUI arrests, this is probably gonna be the main story here. We're trending upward. 2016, we added a third DUI officer. For decades, we've had two DUI officers. A few years in there, we had three, but for the most part, we've had two. In 2016, we added another one, which may have contributed to the increase in 2017. And then, as you know, Chief Soto added an additional DUI officer this year. So from 15 to 16, there was a 22% increase in DUI arrests, total DUI arrests. And then from 16 to 17, we see a 30% increase in DUI arrests. This slide depicts the DUI arrests that involve only marijuana, not alcohol. And obviously, we're seeing a spike here. In 2016, we trained our entire department on, I can't remember, the acronym's ARI, I can't remember what it stands for, but it's basically training to allow the officers how to identify drug usage in individuals without being an actual drug recognition expert. So the trend that you see going upward could be attributed to that and there's probably some other factors here I wanted to talk about. Yeah, every DUI officer received that drug recognition training in 2016. One issue that's potentially impacting the number of DUI arrests we have is, has to do with lab procedures and this is a statewide issue, not just here. But the labs are testing blood for alcohol first and if the presence of alcohol is detected in the blood, they don't do any further testing. It's really a cost-saving measure. Because of that, officers typically request breath first because it's easier and less time-consuming. And in 2018, 571 blood test requests resulted in only 149 DUI marijuana arrests. And we don't know how many of those had both alcohol and THC. There was a bill in the legislature that was intended to address this issue, but it didn't pass. I wanted to point out that Henderson Police Department was concerned about, what we're concerned about, that there may be more poly-intoxicant use and drivers out there. So they began a study in 2017 where they tested for both alcohol and drugs in all their blood tests. And they found that THC and alcohol were present in 46% of all their blood tests conducted. So if you, if that same percentage applied here, we would have had 262 arrests rather than 149 last year, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, did I say it too fast?
No, no. It was just a sharpie number.
Yeah. Well, first, I don't know how far back you need me to go, but we only test, labs here only test for alcohol first and if alcohol's present, they don't do any further testings. Drug testing is double the amount of alcohol testing on blood samples, so they really do it for cost-saving measures because the penalty for DUI alcohol is the same for, penalty for DUI drugs. And this is a statewide issue. Henderson, Nevada, thought, well, there might be a bigger issue here, so they began doing their own informal study and they tested all of their blood samples for alcohol and they found that 46% of all of their blood tests had both THC and alcohol present. And the number I was getting at, that if 46% applied here in Reno, our 149 DUI marijuana arrests would jump to 262. So we may have a bigger issue than we're aware of.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
You said 46% had both.
Right.
So if 149, how does it get to be more? What, I would suspect...
These 149 are marijuana only.
Right.
So if they tested for both marijuana and alcohol, that number could potentially spike up to 46% of our total samples.
And these, this 149 was what? What?
Oh, what percentage?
What group? I mean, who are we testing?
Individuals we arrested for DUI.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they only had marijuana, or I'm sorry, THC present. They didn't have alcohol present.
We didn't test for alcohol?
We didn't test for both. And we didn't test for both because, uh, the lab, the feat of char- uh, to test for both is double the amount of just testing for alcohol.
So when you stop them, it's one or the other? And that, these were a hundred and forty-nine marijuana-only?
When we stop them, we arrest them, and we put in the blood request through the, to the lab. The lab decides what they're gonna test for.
Oh.
And they choose only to test for alcohol, because it's the same penalty as driving under the influence of, driving under the influence of marijuana has the same penalty of driving under the influence of alcohol.
I got that.
Okay. And, and so it's cheaper for them, once they get a positive result, they don't do any further testing, 'cause it doesn't benefit the prosecution.
I'm just missing the conclusion that you're making about the a hundred and forty-nine and the two sixty-two.
Yes.
It's, it's a little counterintuitive to me. It sounds like the lab chooses which one they test for.
That's correct.
But what you're saying is, in forty-six percent of cases, if they did test for both, they would find it in both in forty-six percent. I don't get the two sixty-two. I don't know.
The forty-six percent number I'm using came from a study that Henderson Police Department did.
I got all that.
Yeah, they found forty-six percent of their blood tests carried both THC and alcohol.
You're saying if you applied those numbers to that, it could be higher? I know, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
All right.
So we had five hundred and seventy-one blood tests, yes, in, in Nevada in two thousand and eighteen, and of those, only a hundred and forty-nine had marijuana in them. The rest had at least alcohol in them, potentially maro- uh, alcohol and some other intoxicant. Uh, I'm s- no, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's right, sorry.
Alcohol and marijuana.
Henderson found that forty-six percent of them were THC and alcohol. That's where I get that number from. The reason why I point that out is to illustrate that the issue might be bigger than what we're seeing here. Uh, and then I looked at all of our other data indicators, and there was no remarkable trends in police reports generally since two thousand and twelve. One percent of all our police reports have a mention of marijuana in them. That didn't, that hasn't grown or decreased. Uh, no remarkable trends in calls for service about marijuana in and around the marijuana establishments, anything like that. So I, I really covered, uh, the remarkable trends that we're seeing. And I think, if I could editorialize a little bit here, our data might, the rest of the data, other than the DUI stats, uh, isn't what we saw in Denver and in Colorado and other entities, other jurisdictions. And I, my personal belief is that's because we've done a good job of limiting the industry and limiting the hours of operation to kind of match, uh, the regulatory agency's capacity to regulate them.
I, I'm actually, I'm really proud of this council, the way that we followed the process versus some other jurisdictions, so I wanna commend everyone up here, because I, I do think, um, we were pretty thoughtful.
Yeah.
I still think there's certain things that we could do, um, to put in place. One of the things that I thought was interesting, that I, I think should be looked at, is, no different than alcohol, um, and, and the reason I thought of this is, over the weekend, I think we got those numbers on, um, minors going into alcohol establishments.
Right.
Shouldn't that be the same for marijuana? Are they selling marijuana to minors?
Right.
Those, those kinds of things. And I think those, you know, there's still a lot more to look at. I, I, I'm glad that you brought that up, 'cause I was gonna ask you, 'cause I know you went to Colorado, you've studied this, you know what you're looking at, um, and how different
Yeah.
we are compared to what they're doing, so it's good to hear, um, your feedback on that. And, and lastly, I'll just make it really quick. Um, and Madam Clerk, will you start the time for me, too? Make sure I don't go over three minutes. Um, is, have you looked at geography? I'm, I'm sort of curious to see, um, if there's, you know, if higher crime i- in the geography of those establishments? Can you?
I did. I, I pulled up data within a hundred, I'm sorry, a thousand feet around the establishments, and there was nothing remarkable about the data.
Okay.
Um, there was a couple establishments that had an alarm problem, but that was on an individual basis. We dealt with that and corrected it. Uh, but the other ones, in some instances, things kind of tapered off, not significantly, but tapered off, and that might be attributed to the fact that they occupy space that wasn't used before.
Okay.
Um, but there, you know, there was nothing crazy that you might expect.
Nothing that stood out.
Especially like in, in Colorado, in Denver, when I went there, where there was...
Very high.
Yeah, there was crazy spikes in some areas.
Right.
But, but their industry is, you know, proliferated the area. There was too many stores and too many...
And I know the state is putting in, I know the governor's been, um, very active in putting up, you know, this marijuana board. I almost wonder, too, 'cause I know that they can't do everything, but there are certain things that do really concern me, and that is selling it to minors.
Right.
Um, the other one is also, uh, running credit cards and things through a taco truck.
Right.
That's very concerning. And, uh, some of the, the others, um, were just, you know, not the best, not the best actors.
Yeah, and, and we've been blessed in Reno, and maybe it's because of the, the state's program, but all of, uh, the members of our industry are very professional. Uh, they really wanna be legitimate. They've worked closely with the city. I know they work closely with the police department, so they're doing everything they can on their end.
But just a little more, you know, oversight on
Yeah.
our end through the city. I mean, uh, the one thing I was gonna mention was the mold that they were finding, mold that they were finding
Oh.
on some of these plants.
Well, we don't test that, thank, thank God.
No, I know you don't.
Yeah, a- and, and we do work with the state as well. We work, we've, have been in communication with their regulatory agency and the, and their enforcement board. Uh, early on, they would call us to help them out with, uh, rumors and complaints they would get. They haven't done that so much in the, in the last year or so, but
Right.
when they reach out, we help out as much as we can.
And I just think, bottom line, our message needs to be that the city of Reno, this is completely unacceptable.
I agree.
But I, I appreciate you. You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, council members, gonna start with you. Councilman Reese, anything? Councilman Delgado?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think, as part of your, the question you had, um, I don't have the report here, uh, made the PowerPoint, but the question that just kind of triggered me, Madam Mayor, is geography. Is there a way we can look at hotspots in terms of where a lot of these arrests are being made? Maybe it's not within, are they within certain transit or transit TUDs?
Yeah.
If they're within certain TUDs, are they within certain, uh, do you guys set up DUI checkpoints, or is there a way for us to look at hotspotting where a lot of these are taking place?
You know, I looked at some of it, and there was, wasn't anything that stood out.
Just kind of spread all over the place.
It's just kind of spread out. There's a rant, you know, there's not any patterns to it. Uh, we do uncover some during DUI checkpoints. We aggressively pursue DUI cases. We have three, or we have four DUI officers now, and they literally patrol everywhere. I, I don't think we'll find one or a couple particular areas where we're seeing, um, this problem spiking.
Yeah. Would it be possible just to grab that?
Yeah, we can.
GIS, pull them up?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam.
All right. Um, Vice, uh, Mayor Dewar?
Or Councilwoman Dragan?
Councilwoman Dragan.
Oh, thank you.
I, I can't see you guys up there, so just yell at me.
It's okay. Um, thank you very much for bringing this. I know this is something that I've been, um, eager to get the reporting on for some time.
They wanted to postpone it, and I said, I'm gonna get yelled at. We gotta do it today.
You gotta get yelled at. Um, can you take it back to the, there was a graph that showed a thirty percent increase sixteen into seventeen?
Oh, the, the total DUI arrests.
Which, which coincides with the legalization? Is that, am I drawing?
Yeah, two thousand and seventeen is when rec- uh, retail marijuana was made legal also.
Okay, so, uh, is that the only thing that we can point to that changed between, you know, sixteen, seventeen?
Well, in sixteen, we added another DUI officer.
Okay, so that could've contributed to some of this spike.
And two thousand and sixteen, we tr- trained our entire staff on dr- uh, drugged driving recognition as well.
Okay, so that could've been part of it, uh, as well?
Absolutely, it could've been.
I was just trying to see if there was, uh, other contributing factors, which there is. So, so one of the questions I have is, um, I think we need to give some kudos to the good operators of a number of the marijuana establishments. There was a lot of fear when we started this about people not knowing where they could and couldn't smoke it, where they couldn't, couldn't, you know, buy it, you know, you can't smoke it in the parking lot and that sort of thing. We really didn't see that materialize. That was, we did a pretty good campaign, but the establishments, as I understood it, also were educating their consumers as to what they could and couldn't do.
Absolutely.
I hope that they are still doing that very consistently at our request, um, and that these numbers, which aren't as alarming as I kind of, I'm, I'm glad they're not.
Sure.
Um, I hope they know that we want them to continue to do that. Um, I will say, you know, the one that's right over by the ballpark here, you don't, you don't notice a lot of
Right.
things happening around the building. There's not loitering, there's not, you know, there's not a lot of, and, and that, we were fearful of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that was the one we were most fearful of.
Because there's a lot of, you know, there's a, a lot of activity over there, and, and so, um, I was glad to see a lot of things not come to fruition that I think we were all fearful about.
Me, too.
I still think the campaign of driving high is driving, you know, is a DUI. We just have to keep hammering that point.
Yeah, and a lot of...
And I think we've done an okay job, but however we can continue that campaign of messaging. 'Cause I do think there gets a relaxation to it, where they kind of think, well, it's not drinking, you know, sort of thing. It sure looks like, from some of the numbers, that people are doing both, which is doubly concerning.
Right.
Um, and getting on the road, and I know that we've had a couple of fatalities that could be attributable to, um, marijuana, and one is one too many, so, um, thank you for all of your resources that you've dedicated to this. I think you have kept our community, um, as safe as it could be with this new product out there. Um, and
Product.
Uh, product?
Yeah.
It's product.
Product.
Yeah.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Dewar?
Yeah, thank you. Could you go back one slide? Um, I think it was where you, no, to, it's, yeah, this one.
Mm-hmm.
So I was really interested in this. Um, what, what happens when they're arrested for consuming marijuana in public?
I, actually, we typically cite them.
For like what? What, cite for?
Smoking in public, or...
And what's the punishment or
Uh...
for that?
I think it's like a six hundred dollar fine for the first offense.
Six hundred dollar fine?
But I'm going off memory.
They get to go to your house and plant trees.
Yeah.
Ah!
Yeah.
They got on a work crew, okay?
Right?
Wow. That was topical.
Well, if you can find out later, I would like to know.
It's six hundred dollars. I don't think there's any jail time associated with the first offense.
Okay, and then how does it ramp up from there? You know? Does it go, like, if you've been cited twice or three times?
It never converts up to a felony. It always stays a misdemeanor.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay, so it's a, but you might get another six hundred dollar fine and another six...
I think the amount of the fine increases upon the second usage.
Okay.
Yeah, but...
Um, the majority of my questions are really on the licensing side, so I didn't know if, uh, if you were gonna do a separate presentation, or should I just call you up then? Okay, thanks for everything. Um, just on the licensing...
I would let the, uh, the guy with the gun go first.
Oh, the guy with the gun goes first.
Easier that way. Michael Chomp, Business Relations Manager for License Division.
Okay. Um, I was just wondering, um, you know, I've read, read a lot of confusing stuff on the licensing transfer, and the fact that, you know, I'm not really clear by now what the right answer is. I mean, we thought that when you transfer a license, there's a change of ownership or a change of your board, or whatever, that they would go back through a background check, and then we see, and I hope Dylan will come up, I read the, um, uh, what would you call the, um, the order from the judge, um, this weekend, and it sounds like a lot of people, when they first submitted for an application for marijuana, their board, first of all, all the board members weren't checked. They set this artificial five percent ownership threshold, so if, if you only own three percent, you weren't background checked. Number two, it sounded like if you had a change of ownership during that period, those new owners weren't background checked, and it seemed to be that, and I wanna get some clarity on this, it seemed to be that the attorney, um, excuse me, the judge was saying that they need to be background checked. In other words, if you background-checked the first round of people, but then you changed, it, I, what, my inference was you'd had to get re-background-checked, but I'm gonna guess ask Dylan that in a minute. And then, thirdly, this whole thing with the licensing has brought to my attention the fact that we didn't have a registry of nonprofits. You know, there's this concern about nonprofit or profit, alcohol, uh, treatment, marijuana treatment, drug, drug and alcohol treatment.
That's correct.
Gambling treatment, whatever. And, um, the fact that we don't have a registry of nonprofits is concerning to me, and it's all come up under this, you know, microscope of marijuana, so...
Right.
Didn't know if you wanted to comment, and then maybe we could hear from Dylan.
And you're correct on that, so nonprofits are not required to get a license with the city of Reno. We do encourage them to register, and most, you know, some do register, but it's not a requirement.
Registration and licensing the same?
Um, since they're not-for-profit, they're not charged any fees outside the application fee, so we considered a registration.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
So it's, but it's voluntary right now?
Correct.
Well, I'm gonna later suggest mandatory.
Yep.
'Cause, okay.
All right.
But, um, the transfer of ownership, are you gonna bring that back to us at some point?
Um, yes, yeah, and we're looking at specifically the two that you asked for. I know you had received a briefing on, uh, the, the one in question, I believe.
I have two coming up in my ward, and they're on the next agenda.
Yeah. And, uh, we will bring that back. We have, uh, we have...
Are you talking about the same thing of, um, any transfer or win the sale? Because I, I just read that one sold for about fifteen million?
Right.
Right, so, so
So that's more time to imagine.
There's an article out there on Bloom that is, uh, is selling, and I won't get into the total process of that, but important to note that a change of ownership, uh, one, one thing first, licenses are not transferable. So that's important for the council to understand. So, um, the only transferable license that we have is the pawn shop license, which you saw earlier on your consent agenda, but licenses are not transferable. So when it does sell, the new applicants have to come back to council.
Okay.
And then we're, uh, doing research on the existing ones that, uh, there may or may not correct. So I have a call into the state of Nevada that, they've been busy with the judge, getting the judge information, but we're gonna bring that back, um, on if they, 'cause the, the process is they have to start at the state level to, to change. So, so Bloom, for example, um, would have to get approved by the state, and then the state's gonna notify us, they'd have to apply with us, and then I will bring that back to you.
Um, and then, can you look at ones that, um, have sold since inception? 'Cause there are, there are several...
We're looking at that. Yeah, we're looking at that.
That need to come back? That they sold literally when they got the license, and then they flipped them?
And I had a couple that had had sales before they applied as well, so we didn't, you know, that was...
That's where I'm going.
That happened previous, so I know there's one in particular that you'll be seeing on the eleventh, that they had a, a change of ownership prior to them applying with the city of Reno, so that occurred back in November.
Okay.
And that's why we, we didn't, we didn't bring something back, 'cause we're bringing the new owners back, but we're confirming all that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dragan?
Thank you very much. Can we bring the man with the gun back up?
Who, me?
Yeah, if more than one person stands up, we might...
I had to clarify something, too, for Councilwoman Dewar, so...
He's like, he jumps up.
It's like me.
Ten people stand up. Um, so my question is this. I know when, uh, there's been some discussions about a breathalyzer-styled device technology for marijuana that was in the works, has that made any progress?
No, we get excited every time a new product comes to market, but nothing, nothing is panning out.
Nothing that can give any reliable...
There's been three or four different ones. There's a hair test, a blow test, uh, I mean, a breath test, a saliva test.
None of that's panning out?
Nothing is panning out, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, and to, um, Mayor Shivi's point about the establishment that, um, is running some of their purchases through a, uh, food truck.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's not only a no-no, as I understand it, revenue to the city is being missed, uh, because it's taxed at different levels.
Right.
There's a lot, there's a difference tax between a taco and marijuana.
Really?
Just saying.
Yeah.
So, um, I feel like that needs to be brought to...
I haven't heard about this yet, so I'll make sure our
Correction, oh, no, I've, uh...
Units are on it.
I have. Okay, thank you.
Uh, if I could, I wanted to clarify something for Councilmember Dewar. I, I looked up that law, and I need to correct what I said, because, hold on. I was wrong, which rarely happens, but sometimes it does.
That's not what your wife probably says, huh?
Yeah, totally not. She says I'm rarely right. Anyhow, for the first offense, it's a misdemeanor six hundred dollar fine. Second offense, it's a thousand dollar fine. Third offense, it's gross misdemeanor, and the fourth, it does become a felony, category E felony.
And that's for smoking in public?
Yes, consuming, so it could be, I don't think we've ever enforced eating an edible in public, but technically, that could be, that would be, uh, covered by that law as well.
All right. Um, any other questions? One thing I did wanna bring up, like, just a couple more. This is probably more for Michael Chomp. Uh, one of the things that, um, that someone brought to my attention, and you can clarify for me, but that we don't notice, um, the residents and the businesses around those establishments, uh, for a privileged license, whether it is marijuana or alcohol or whatever. Is that true?
We do for alcohol.
We do for alcohol.
It's not required for marijuana, yeah. For alcohol, if it's, uh, if, if alcohol is gonna be, uh, new on that premises, uh, we have posted public notice on, at the outside of the building.
For alcohol.
With a type of, type of license.
Again, can we put that one on our list?
We, we, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, 'cause I do think everyone should be noticed.
We had that conversation. It's just not in, you know, it's not required, but right now.
If a marijuana, um, establishment is going to open in their neighborhood, I think that they should be noticed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
And then...
And that noticing, just so you know, that's posted on the, on the premises, so there's no additional noticing of the neighbors around it.
But it should be, like alcohol, right?
So, that, I just, that's how it's, how it's done today.
No, I think she's saying, are you saying it's only an onsite notice? I think she's saying, are you saying it's only an onsite notice? There's no, nothing to me.
There's no additional noticing. Just so you know what, just so you know what we do today.
Yes.
That's for alcohol.
I think, you know, we're getting better as we evolve, but we also gotta treat it a lot like we do with alcohol.
But wait a second, that's why I'm unclear. Do we notice individuals for alcohol or just the notice?
Just the notice on the building.
That's what I'm saying. It's not.
So if you, if you go by, I can't think of one, any, any, any of the ones that came to you today that didn't previously have alcohol on site. There would be a notice, a public notice posted in the building.
Not notice.
We do not mail, we do not mail notice. That's correct.
Keep saying different things.
Madam Mayor, if I could help jump in and clarify, just from the noticing standpoint, I think. To bridge the gap here, we publicly notice the building establishment itself with a public notice. However, the residents are not sent a postcard. And so I believe that you're both asking for that next layer up to notice physically the premises of marijuana as well as. Discussion on sending out postcards to the neighbors surrounding the area is what I think I'm hearing.
I I was, someone brought to my attention, they were noticed differently. And I thought.
And so.
Marijuana should be just as. Looked at as.
As alcohol.
Alcohol.
Yeah, okay.
That was my point. The other thing I'm curious about too is how does a business get down the road? I mean, they get locations. I mean, this could be other businesses as well. And I've seen it happen, not just with marijuana. But they get down the road, they they invest all this money. Find locations, all of that. And then they have to come to council and get this privileged license where we can say, I'm sorry, not happening. And they have spent a ton of money trying to get into business. That was something else I thought was.
Cart before the horse, maybe.
Exactly. How can we? Sort of, is there some way that we?
They, and of course, they could wait until the privileged license comes to you for approval. Sometimes the timelines, it, you know, no license is guaranteed. As we tell the, tell the applicants.
Knowing that they're taking the risk.
And we're taking some additional steps internally. Arlo and myself were discussing that just today about. You know, letting them know that they may want to wait. To do any tenant improvements. But what we find and the other challenge that we find is. Some don't even come to get licensed. They do all their TIs, all their improvements, and then they realize, oh, I need to get a business license. Because a lot of times it's the last thing on their mind. So everything's already built out. So now they're taking their chances of going forward. Now, we we do our best, you know, business friendly environment to get them. Get them to you guys as quick as we can and get them licensed.
Okay. Thank you. And last but not least, I was having a conversation with Dr. Laura Knight, our coroner. And she brought it to my attention that there is a new substance out there called kratom. Have you guys heard of this kratom? They're starting to. Now it's become on the list of over overdoses. And you're seeing them at vape, it's. Distributed through vape shops. And then I I noticed on those vape shops, they would say CDB. Oil here. And and I thought that was kind of interesting because I I thought that the health department just confiscated, and you might know better than I would. Confiscated some chocolates that had CBD in them. So how does that?
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up a little bit later during our council roundups, but we had a meeting the other day. It's basically suggest, you cannot sell CBD anywhere outside of a marijuana dispensary. Until the regulations are been created, policy has been set by the state. And the hope is that those policies will be set by July of next year, if not sooner. But so the health department is starting to go out, inform and and also cease and desist anyone that's selling CBD. Because the conversation is there is no real testing that's been done yet to say, suggest what's. Okay to to. To consume or not. But. You can purchase it from a dispensary because that's state regulated, not regulated by the county.
So you're talking about the oil as well, right? So that's all the same. Got it. So anyone selling CBD oil is a no-no. Unless you are a dispensary.
And so the health district does, exactly. So the health district will start going out notifying, cease and desist. And you even have big corporations that are starting to stop that as well. They're gonna start taking them off their shelves until there's been regulations.
And I don't know, maybe, maybe we look at vape shops being privileged licenses, especially when they're selling kratom. And other types of products that are not regulated. So.
And the health department, that that was infused product that was for human consumption. And that was the challenges that Councilmember Delgado talked about. There, they haven't been tested to say it's safe to consume.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Do we have to, are we clear? Do we have to take any motion?
We do not need to take any action on this item, Madam Mayor. Your agenda is for it.
Would it be possible to have Mr. Shaver just brief us on what hap- just happened on Friday?
Sure, come on up.
And while he's coming up, CDB oil, I see it for sale everywhere. It's every, it's like everywhere.
That's why I'm saying the vape shops are something to really. Look at.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Dylan Shaver, your Director of Policy and Strategy, thank you for having me up here today. It's been a while since I've. Gotten to hear my own voice, so I hope you enjoy it as much as I do.
Always appreciate your humor.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer, as you heard, just asked that I come up and talk a little bit about the preliminary injunction. Temporary restraining order that was issued last Friday in Judge Gonzalez's courtroom. This is the TRO we have been eagerly awaiting since since May. And it's, it's fairly comprehensive in her ruling, though I should say from the outset that. None of the directions she provides in in her order applies directly to the city. It all applies to the State Department of Taxation. And then, of course, I have to jump in with my standard caveat that I am not your nor anybody's attorney, so you can't rely on what I say. Please don't rely on what I say. As legal advice. The gentleman and the young lady over to your left can can take care of the legal part for you. But we have reviewed the the order coming out of Judge Gonzalez's courtroom. And the crux of it is this, you know, there are concerns about the. The use of temporary employees in the scoring process, but she says in the order, well, that doesn't really rise to the level. There are concerns about training, how those employees were trained. She says, well, that's a concern, again, may not rise to the level for the court to provide relief. But really what she hinged the the ruling on was when the voters approved this ballot initiative. They required the Department of Taxation to go in and and vet every owner. And that in her mind was pretty clear. She believes and and the Supreme Court has affirmed. That when ruling on a voter initiative, you really have to give that initiative, the the pride, the success of that initiative, sort of the primacy. When you're, when you're coming up with your ruling. And to that end, she looked at what was in the. In the initiative itself and what the Department of Taxation actually did, which they, you know, convened working groups and all that and said, boy. Vetting every owner would be really difficult, so we're going to set this 5% threshold. Which was not, so they would vet basically every owner that was 5% or more. And she found that that was the Department of Taxation are acting arbitrarily and capriciously, something that we always warn government entities against. Nothing in the initiative allowed for them to do that. And so what she said in in the ruling was that the state is enjoined from conducting a final inspection of any conditional licenses. Who did not provide identification for each prospective owner, officer and board member as required by by the initiative, NRS 453D dot 200. Now, for the purposes of this city council. The city of Reno has, as you know, four slots open right now. We have received. Applications for each one of those slots. All but one of the. Applicants that we have received. The the judge lists as having received verification for each of their prospective owners. One of ours did not. And so we are working with legal counsel right now. Mind you, this came out on Friday to determine how best to proceed and advise on on that particular applicant. But the judge even goes so far as to to list the applicants in her ruling that that did have the full. Background check of all of their ownership. And again, three of our applicants are on that list. I I should again make clear, this is an injunction against the State Department of Taxation to issue a. Final license for those conditional licenses, the list which we received a year ago, December. And, you know, again, we're going to confer on how best to advise you on these. We're also looking to the State Department of Taxation to give us a little bit of direction and guidance on how they intend to proceed. In the in the coming weeks, on the 29th, there is a hearing coming up. Where the judge will look at, among other things, the level of the bond the plaintiffs have to file. And she has indicated at that time that she will also hear from people who feel like they should be on that full list. But your next meeting isn't until the 11th. Hopefully, we can have better information by then. On that remaining slot. Otherwise, stay tuned, hopefully from your attorneys to get get clear legal advice on how to proceed in that regard. The rest of your question was about, at least when you were talking to Mr. Chomp, was about how it seemed in the judge's ruling, like some folks. Did not, were not adequately investigated before the, by the department. Before an application was or before a license was awarded. That was not how how I read the order. But she definitely does create questions about the depth of the investigations. And she did note that the. Department mentioned to applicants that they would have to become fully compliant in order to actually receive their license. Yeah, after the license was actually awarded. So that that obviously would indicate that perhaps there were some inconsistencies with those investigations. What the order does not tell us is the extent to which that affected particular applicants, right? So we don't really have context that we could then go in and look at somebody who was applying here, for example, and say, well, you know, she's raised some questions around this. To that end, heretofore, we have taken the Department of Taxation at their word as as they have handed down licenses. Or I should say conditional licenses and provisionary licenses before they, when they come to the city. So, you know, certainly, we will go back and review everybody who's applied and make sure that they have all been compliant with the city of Reno's rules. As to whether or not they've applied to the state rules. I think the judge gives us a clear sense here. But. You know, the, what I will say, and I I think I've been saying this from the beginning, no matter. This is a temporary restraining order to then allow for a full trial on this issue. And mind you, just this TRO has taken months. So if we are looking for some sort of final guidance, the timeline for that would be, you know, the. The trial itself and then the appeal to however that trial rules out to the Supreme Court. You could be looking at several years for that timeline. That is not a comfortable position for us as staff to be in, but we will bring you things according to city procedure. And if you do not like the procedure, we will bring you changes to that procedure as you've already discussed with Mr. Chomp.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right.
Question for Mr. Dylan.
Can you?
Okay.
Hurry, someone, I don't even think we're really agendized for this discussion, but go ahead.
We're running towards the edge of it.
Okay. Well, just, you know, my concern, just so we know, because we'll be coming up to have this conversation is. The judge's order seemed to say that because locations weren't necessarily uniformly. Required or those procedures changed during the process, some were posted. What I'm concerned about is one of the things state has to do is evaluate the community impact. And I I don't know if they evaluated community impact if they didn't have a location. So that's just put a marker out there. It'll come up at our next council meeting. So and I can talk about some of my other issues, you know, if you'd rather, but. You know, my two concerns are just. Potentially having a do-over if they're in our top four, we award a license and then. They're no longer in our top four because there was a do-over. Or number two, we award a license, they sell it, they they've shown a propensity for selling. And maybe they weren't in the top four. And I've asked them this question directly and they said, well, we'll just sell it. But I'm concerned about they're selling something based on our awarding of a license potentially. But maybe that was based on a misunderstanding of the rankings. So those are my two issues for our group when when it comes up. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate all the great feedback and the flair you provided, Tommy.
Madam Mayor, with that, there is no action agendized for this item. Will we be moving on to item E1, which is an ordinance introduction to be read by the city attorney?
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna send it over to City Attorney Carl Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is ordinance number 7099. So introduction and referral for a second reading. Case number TXT 19 dash 00002, changeable digital sign standards, NRS requirements. Ordinance to amend Reno Municipal Code Title 18, Annexation and Land Development, Chapter 18.16, Signs, Section 18.16. Point 701, Permanent, Unpreminence Sign Regulations by zoning district. And Section 18.16.702, Additional Regulations for Animated Signs. In order to enable digital representation of material regulated by Nevada revised statutes to give the matters properly relating there to.
All right. Thank you so much. Madam clerk, do you have any public comment?
I do. Madam Mayor Lori Ray would like to speak, followed by Miranda Hoover, followed by Karen Munson.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council. Today, I'd like to thank you first for the vote the last time on this issue was unanimous. Appreciate that. Also, I just wanted to point out again that. Did I say something wrong?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm listening to you.
Oh, okay. Sorry. So it was a compromise and. Scenic Nevada had originally asked for a 24-hour flip time and we backed off of that and went to a one-hour flip time. I think the Nevada Department of Agriculture. Also backed off of their request for no flip time because of. I'm not sure exactly why, but they did as well. So. We hope you approve this today. I brought some pictures. The the reason why. We want the flip time, of course, is for this Carson City sign that flips every four seconds. And we brought that to your attention last time, and that's why we don't want that happening on Matrose Highway. And we also wanted 150 knit limit. And I know that you did approve that for the. Drive-through signs on Matrose Highway for fast food places. And. So I just wanted to show you, we did a study on sign brightness in the Truckee Meadows. And that's a, a photo that shows that the top. Part, the rose, that's neon and that's at 521 nits. The middle one where it says Sparks Floris, that's 88 nits and the bottom reading is at 74 nits. So you can see that. You can view those at much less than 150 nits. Also, from the same study, that's actually a billboard with different kinds of lighting on it. And the interesting thing is that at 6.2 nits, you can see in view the the part of the sign that's uplit from standard lighting. And then the two digital gas station things are on the right. And I, very frankly, I don't know which one is 204 and which is 369 nits, but I think it's the red one, the top one is 204. The reason why is because on my computer, there's a vapor or cloud around the bottom one, which usually means that it's much brighter. So we think that 150 nits is also what the. Dark Skies Association is recommending, 150 nits as well. So we feel like these are reasonable standards and regulations. We would like you to approve them. And remember, these are in areas where digitals are prohibited. And so, you know, in our minds, we. You know, we're not opposed to something like this that acts like, that emulates a standard sign. If it goes up and it's just, it's not bright, it's not flipping, and it's easy for the gas station owners, we're fine with that. And we hope you do approve this. And we think it is a good. Compromise and a good way to go. So thank you very much.
All right. Good feedback. Thanks so much.
Miranda Hoover, followed by Karen Munson.
Good afternoon. Once again, was hoping to say good morning, but not lucky. For the record, Miranda Hoover, representing the Nevada Petroleum Marketers and Convenience Store Association. We support the original planning commission proposal heard on July 17th. However, we oppose the addition to the flip time regulation even being once per hour and the brightness limitation to 150 nits. Televisions on average are 300 to 500 nits, just to put some perspective to that. This proposed ordinance allows stations with manual signs to change as often as conditions warrant, but regulates a digital sign owner to once per hour. This proposal is being seen in our industry as the city council picking winners and losers. On August 14th, two council members stated on record, this was overreach and a waste of council time. Yet the vote was unanimous to move this proposal forward. The proponents claim the Carson City gas station signs as the reason for their flip time and brightness proposals. But even this proposed ordinance would not prevent those signs that as it currently relates to the definition of flashing under the Reno City Ordinance Code. It does not include what those signs currently do, which we think it looks like it's flashing. It does not include what those signs currently do, which we think it looks like it's flashing. And a special use permit would still be required to obtain those signs. As you start diving further into the minutia of definitions under Reno City Code, there's no clear concise definition for terms such as flip time or digital, and we hope one day that we can be part of those conversations to change that. Much of the discussion has also surrounded the scenic Matrose corridor by the proponents that are currently two gas stations on the highway, that both have small monument digital signs, one of which can clearly be seen from Matrose Highway. We have reason to believe that if you pass this ordinance with a limitation of how often a business owner may change his or her price sign, it could potentially also violate the U.S. Commerce Clause. Lastly, as I stand here with you today, the Truckee Meadows has about a 10-day supply left of gasoline. It may be somewhat shorter due to Burning Man and the Sparks Rib cook-off and the upcoming Labor Day holiday, but all it takes is an international incident, such as in the Middle East, closure of the Trans Sierra Pipeline from San Francisco or the Bay Area, or disruption of rail service from the Midwest, where our current ethanol originates. Any of these factors would cause an immediate price spike, and depending on the duration of the outage, station owners could have price changes multiple times within the hour from their suppliers as everyone scrambles to find gas. Of course, first responders and hospitals will be first priority and first in line to get gas, while the rest of the public must wait. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Definitely. Stick around.
Karen Munson, on behalf of Yasko.
Sorry, of course, I had it up, and it just went down. Good afternoon, Karen Munson from Yasko. And as Miranda had just spoken, prior to the Planning Commission meeting on July 24th, the proposed language that was set forward had no mention to any change time or hold time in the ordinance. And, sorry, I'm trying to find it here. Here it is. Had no change time listed in the ordinance, and therefore, we were somewhat okay with what that allowance was going to look like. Still didn't approve the 150 nits, and honestly, I thought it was a typographical error. Didn't appear at that evening's Planning Commission meeting, and my grandsons were in town, and truly thought that it was an error. And Mr. Weatherby stood out here a couple weeks ago and talked to each of you about nits and the high numbers of those. And then you just also heard that a television is anywhere from 3 to 500. But really, what we're here to stand against is that there would be any regulatory timing with the amount of times a business could change the signs. That there has been conversation about the Carson City signs, and a couple weeks ago, when we stood here, heard a couple council members call them blinky blinky or flashy flashy. When we look at city code, and I don't see staff here today that could really answer to you what the definition, excuse me, definition of flashing is, there really isn't a true flashing definition. But still, this sign, even if it was changed every four minutes, every four seconds, I don't know that that would happen in four seconds. But having some standard set that would require or disallow a business to change their pricing, I think, would be unfair to the business owners. And that's all I need to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any more public comment?
I have no further public comment.
Okay. Okay, so, maybe Nathan, you can help us here. So, I, interesting, so what you're telling me is you can only change that price one time per hour?
Madam Mayor, for the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Just to remind the council and the mayor, this item was heard at the last hearing. Council did approve the ordinance in your packet with that modification. So council gave the direction to modify the Planning Commission's recommendation to include a one-hour change of copy.
And what was the Planning Commission's, what was their recommendation to?
It was a 24-hour limit.
Oh, they wanted a 24?
Yes, and council modified that.
So then we did an hour. So my question is, that if, what happens? Okay, because here, we talk about unintended consequences, right? What happens if I look down and I realize, oh, I did that wrong? And then I go and I change the, you know, change the sign again? And then I'm like, oh, wait a minute, 30 minutes later, the gas prices have changed. I think you actually brought up kind of a good point. And I know, let me just tell you, I mean, as a business owner, you get really, really busy. I mean, you're putting out fires all the time. You know, it'd be one of those things where it could easily happen where you change it more in an hour. That does concern me a little bit.
So this was discussed at the last hearing. Really, it was intended to address a worst-case scenario. The example was shared about a Carson City where a business owner is trying to maximize the copy area, given that, again, we're talking about scenic corridors here. So the intent of the Planning, the Planning Commission's intent was to stay that worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I just want to, again, unintended consequences. What else? There was one more thing I wanted. Oh, let's talk about nits. So we came up with 150?
Correct.
What standard nits?
For frame of reference, the state NAC for billboards within, I believe, 200 feet of a highway is a 200-knit limit. So it's slightly lower than that.
A little lower?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's still visible?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead. Councilwoman Jordan. Oh, Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate those questions. I had a lot of those questions in mind as well. Read through the report. I think I was the one that made the motion in terms of how we moved forward with a one-hour versus a 24-hour. It's, I think, even with the international crisis in the past history, I'd like to hear from the public comment in terms of how many times we've made changes to our gas prices within even that timeframe. I've thought it'd be reasonable that we moved it down to an hour, even respectfully knowing that we have to make an amendment to what's currently at play. We have some people that have been looking out for our scenic corridors for several years, and their compromise was that one hour with, that's 24 different times a day, that they can come and make those changes within our scenic corridors is, I think, was sufficient enough, especially for our scenic corridors, as much time as we spent previously in terms of coming to a compromise with these digital signs. In addition to that, I don't think that we're saying you can't do it, because technically they can't do it right now. We're saying that you can do it. It's just within 24 different times a day at a certain knit process, in terms of also acknowledging that technology is coming forward. And so how do we make suggestions to make sure that that moves forward? They can't do that currently in other different, again, this is scenic corridors, we can't, we're not making a general statement that's across the city of Reno. That's something that we need to make sure and clear about. But I'd love to hear suggestions in terms of what we're, another, about other ideas in terms of making sure that we're providing for those spaces, but at the same time, moving technology and business forward, like we did with the menu signs, which, again, they were not allowed, but we knew that those were moving forward, and we found a compromise in order to make those happen.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. I appreciate that. I was on the phone last council meeting, but we were having a lot of technical difficulty, and so you could barely hear it, and then I would get kicked off and come back on, so I apologize. Anyway, go ahead. Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I need some clarification too, because my understanding was that for the, kind of the scenario that Mayor Shivi indicated, an employee screws up, notices it 10 minutes later and goes, oh, shoot, I gotta go flip it back, or up, or whatever. I thought it was 24 changes in a 24-hour period, and if they burned through 24 after 10 hours, then the last two hours, they were, they couldn't change it anymore. I didn't know that it was you get once, and then you gotta wait 59 minutes, and then you can change it again, and you can wait 59 minutes. I thought it was you get 24, and however you use those 24, you use those 24.
What if you accidentally change it to 50 cents, and then everyone comes running in for that hour?
And then you're stuck, and you can't change it back to 350.
Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director.
Our friends at Scenic Nevada are not amused. I can tell.
Let me first start by apologizing that this is back in front of you.
I'm totally cool with it.
This was a public hearing two weeks ago, and action was taken. The agenda wasn't written properly to introduce the ordinance at that meeting, so here we are again, not to have a new public hearing, but to move forward with the process. We can certainly make that change, and in reality, we're not out policing signs every 10 minutes if they're flipping or not flipping. Staff does believe it's appropriate to have some limit, so it doesn't cycle through and go back and forth between the different types of prices, like we're seeing in Carson City. An hour, a half hour, it really doesn't matter on our end. We're not going to go out and enforce unless we get a complaint that they are frequently changing, and 24 times a day can certainly accommodate changes in price.
Okay. All right. Give me a motion, Councilwoman Jordan.
Sure.
Oh, go right ahead.
Yes.
So the point is, if there was an emergency, if there were, we were talking about, they have the ability to go and make the changes.
Yeah. They're not, they're not going to be out there, you know, getting crazy, and, I mean, this is all moderation. How often do you guys see those change anyway?
We don't allow these, so we don't see them change at all.
Right now, they're not allowed.
This is an ordinance to allow a sign that's not currently allowed by code to support the industry with a reasonable limitation. Given the discussion, I would recommend changing the wording of the ordinance to replace once per hour to 25 times per day, so we stay away from any potential confusion here. And beyond that.
I think that's a good point. Okay. Vice Minister Jordan, give me a motion. Let's move on.
I'm going to make the same motion Mr. Delgado made last time, which is to adopt the ordinance with a change every hour.
Okay.
Allowing a change every hour. This is a special area, so it's a scenic corridor. They're not allowed now. And then in an emergency, I guess I'll just add this, in an emergency, we have, you know, requirements that, for example, if there's an emergency, we don't want to see everybody triple their hotel room prices, you know? It at least acts as a slight limitation, I suppose, so that people don't triple the price, you know, every 24 times in one hour, that kind of thing. So I'd like to just stick with the, I wanted to stick with the motion that Mr. Delgado made, if you want a different motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Jordan, go ahead.
I was under the impression, and I understand that we're saying we're going to be flexible with that, they're the ones on the practical end user, and they're saying, but the wording of, and if it ever gets into some dispute, they're relying on the wording of. So if the motion is to keep it at the very restrictive once per hour, I'm not going to support that. If it's to allow 24 flips in a 24-hour period, I will support that. I agree.
The only thing with that is, I'm afraid that it would get, people would then think you could do it excessively, because it kind of sounds like you could do it excessively in that time period. Does that make sense?
But then you cut your own throat if prices really change towards the end of the 24 period, and then you can't change it.
But what I do want to say is, I appreciate Scenic Nevada for also working with them and having this compromise. That was really nice. It was very nice. So I think that, you know, that's really important to recognize. Because right now, they're not allowed.
Correct. So right now, they're not allowed, period, to have a digital sign for gas in a scenic corridor. So we're going quite a distance, and I think the challenge with what's been proposed by my colleagues is that we would have to be out there with a counter saying, okay, they're now up to 22, are they going for 24? I mean, I don't think it's practically enforceable to allow them to do it 24 times in 24 hours. So that's just, I just think it creates a difficult enforcement environment. So anyway, my motion is just to reflect Mr. Delgado's motion from last time, and I'm sorry for the, you've misagendized it, or whatever, but I don't know if there's a second for that.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Nay. So give me back a motion, Councilwoman Reese.
Madam Mayor, I will move that we adopt the ordinance with the amendment that it allow for the sign to be changed 24 times during the day.
All right. I have a motion from Councilwoman Reese, a second from Councilwoman Jordan.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Go ahead.
Just on your motion, that this is a bill introduction, so your motion will be a referral for adoption to come back with those changes as stated on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. Thanks so much.
Okay, Madam Mayor, with that, we are transitioning to item G1, is Appointment of the Ward One Neighborhood Advisory Appointments.
All right. Seeing that Councilwoman Bruckus is not here, I think we just move on and allow her to decide when she decides to return to council.
So we will continue this item to a future agenda. We do not need a motion to that effect. Next item would be G1-2, Appointment of the Financial Advisory Board. Councilwoman Reese is the liaison.
Councilwoman Reese, all you.
I would move to appoint Kenneth Becker.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
As noted previously, item G2 has been continued to a future agenda. Item H1 is an update from council members on boards and commissions.
Any updates from council members on your boards, commissions? Nope? Nothing?
I just wanted to.
Councilwoman Jordan.
Reiterate about the flood. You know, we've had a number of things going on there. One is to potentially change the voting structure, and I think.
No, I thought we said we couldn't, they didn't want to do it.
No, that's not what happened. They sent out information.
Oh.
Yeah.
But maybe, I thought they said no.
No, they just said how to do it, that, what you, the steps you need to go through to do it. And then they sent out information. Okay.
Yeah. I'm just saying.
Well, maybe we could get clarity and report on that next time.
That's a good idea.
And then you all heard about coming back with some information on sports fields. And on Tomwa, you know, we had to move forward with a rate increase for new development, for connection fees. So that was a big thing that we had to do there. It wasn't fun. But we had to reflect, what's that?
It's not for the user.
No, not for, correct, it was for the connection fees. So I just think people should know that.
Okay, good idea.
Okay. And then I'm gonna, I guess, request an agenda item, I guess, under public comment, because I'm not sure where to do it, so.
Go ahead. Madam Clerk.
Just to clarify my understanding of council's practice now, just speaking as the mayor's, or, excuse me, as the manager's not present, if council would like to request a future agenda item, I believe the process is that council is to email the manager, and then she'll proceed with that process accordingly.
Right.
Just as we're not agendized for that, so I wanted to make sure that your process is proper.
That's why I'm gonna comment on public comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For clarity, reiterate my statement earlier on the CBD. I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification from the Health Department that responded. So you can purchase CBD if it's a topical application, but in order to buy it as a food product or food additive, or for medical use, you have to go to dispensary. So for topical, yes, but anything for, that you ingest, food product, food additive, or medicinal, you have to go to a food dispensary.
Those CBD oils that you consume is illegal.
You can't do it. They can't sell it. But if it's a topical, it's like a lotion or something else, a cream, you can do that. And so those are the differences, and they're going through the process. One of the, again, one of a far-fetched, I think, kind of ways to look at it is, they're saying, you know, you could purchase it in your water in the morning, you could put it in your coffee, you could buy it during lunch and add stuff to your food, and then at the end of the day, you don't necessarily know how much you've ingested. And so that's one of the issues, why they're kind of going about looking at in terms of policy, so you get more of an idea what's safe and what's not. And so, so that's the way the Health Department's looking at it anyways.
All right. Good. Thanks for doing that. We appreciate it. Okay. Madam Clerk, how about you?
All right. Madam Mayor, our next item is H2. This is for possible action council discussion and potential direction regarding constituent requests for research and action related to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay. Uh, where are we?
If there is no discussion on this, Madam Mayor, is there's, there is discussion.
Do you have any public comment?
I do not have public comment registered.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Reese, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you, um, I, I, um, look, I think there's power in a name and, uh, and who we choose to honor, uh, so I would like to see this body, move this issue to our Human Rights Commission for them to explore, um, what is the best thing for this community. Um, I know that six states and 130 cities have already, uh, renamed this holiday and so I am someone who believes strongly in, um, honoring that commitment of the Indigenous people who were here before we were and so I'd like to see, uh, what the HRC has to say on the subject and so that would be ultimately my personal desire to see the direction move is to have it go quickly to the HRC uh, because I would like to see what can be done, uh, before the, I guess it's the second Monday in October.
Yeah.
So that, that's the idea.
I think that's great. Councilman, uh, Delgado and I, um, were under the impression because we had, um, some community meetings on this too, that that was going to be in effect. Um, but I think that that's, I think that's a great idea, but we should, you know, continue to move forward with that. And I appreciate, uh, Councilman Delgado, you made some comments, um, at a previous council meeting and, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, this is a conversation you and I had with the community, with some community members, um, after the incident that happened under the arch. Now, that was a discussion that we had, um, so it's, I'm glad that we're having it come back. I know we had a lot of staff changes, manager changes, all types of things that, that had occurred between then and now. And so, yeah, I appreciate the, this item moving forward to the Human Rights Commission to further explore to bring it back to us.
Okay. All right, great. Uh, so I have a motion from, uh, Councilman Delgado, uh, second from Councilman, uh, no, Councilman, I have a motion from Councilman Reese, a second from Councilman Delgado. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, moving to general public comment, uh, Dennis Lalande would like to speak.
Okay.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Yes, uh, I was, uh, I live at, uh, uh, 161 East Sixth Street, it's the, uh, Easy Inn Motel. Now, now, since I've stayed there, uh, the place has been called numerous times on different things. Uh, the place is infested with bedbugs, uh, it took me a year before they even considered giving me a new heater and a air conditioner, which last winter was kinda cold. So I had to wrap up in blankets and then had to borrow people's portable heaters. And, uh, the, the manager there, she's a, uh, she embezzled from the place for many years from, from the tenants that lived there. And they also have a part-time, uh, manager that's a three-time child molester. Then they let people manage places like that, all, you know, I'll never know why. And, uh, the management there is, is very mean to people. The, uh, like I said, it took me a year just to get a, uh, uh, another, um, heater and air conditioning unit. Then, then, uh, my, uh, refrigerator give out, gave out on me, it took me six months to get one of those. And the place is run down, I mean, it, they have a big old billboard out, outside of places fully newly remodeled for. That, that's a crock in itself because it's not, I mean, uh, the place that I live at, the, the carpet's coming up, they don't wanna fix anything. I just don't understand how, 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 uh, anybody could stay in business that way and their false advertising. I mean, they say they're good, they say they got the cheapest place in town, which they probably do, but as of now, I'm, I'm gonna move out on, on the 3rd because I, I can't handle it no more. I mean, I've, I've stayed there two years and two years too long and I just want the city council to know what's going on there. I mean, because I don't think it's fair to, to myself or any, any other person that lives there.
Can you tell me, um, what the name of this motel is?
Yes, it's this, uh, it's the Easy Inn.
The Easy Inn?
Yes.
And it's on Sixth Street?
Yeah, it's 1661. It's right across the street from that 24/7 place.
Okay.
And it's.
And where, where are you moving to?
Well, I'm, hopefully, I'm, I'm moved to Carson City, hopefully, if I, if I find a place.
Okay.
You know, because, uh, if not, I'll, I'm gonna move somewhere around town. I got till the 7th to move out.
And let me, um, what are they charging you? Uh, you're, you're.
$5.50.
Your week, right?
No, no, I'm, I'm monthly, $5.50.
A month?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but for, you know, they absolutely do nothing, you go, I mean, I've went, I've asked them, you gotta get on a list for them to do, do something then they'll do it at their leisure. I mean, it's, it's horrible. I mean, it's, I'm sure you've had complaints about this before.
We appreciate it and we were, you, what we'll do is we'll send our code enforcement out there.
Yes, because it's, it, I think it should be shut down myself, it's just, it's, you know, it's, it's horrible. I mean, it's, I, I'd rather live in a tent.
Well, thank you very much and if they, if I, they find those violations, they will shut them down.
All right, thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming and letting us know.
Thank you.
Exactly what's going on there.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir.
Have a nice day.
All right.
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no further general public comment, so we would be looking.
Okay. Comment, thank you. Um, I just wanted to say I'm, I'm just hoping, and I'll send an email to our manager, just, she's not here right now, uh, requesting that we have an update on the marijuana license because we have two licenses coming up next meeting and I wanna better understand how, or, or an attorney-client briefing, whatever. Uh, I wanna better, before we make that decision, I wanna better understand how this may or may not affect that. That's it.
I think that, that, the attorney-client.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Weber.
Um, Madam Mayor, I have some hard to look at this. But I've observed and a lot of people have talked to me at my coffees and other areas about all the homeless folks laying along the river, sleeping along the river, um, they're sleeping in our little park downstairs.
Yeah.
Um.
Did you get my email over the weekend?
I did not.
I thought I added you on there.
You, you probably did.
Oh, okay. So it addresses this very concern.
Okay.
And, um, and I, and basically, to sum it up, I asked for everyone's support that I have a plan, but what I've started to do, because it's become so concerning, is I, I started to, and I have records and Rick can get all those for you, um, the countless emails that I get of the concern of what's happening along the river, um, you know, obviously it's our drinking water. Well, and part of it too, it's, it's also dangerous for our homeless. Um, I know that they're sort of the sediment, sediment of, oh my goodness, the big bad council, they wanna kick them out of, you know, their homes along the river, but it's also really, really dangerous and what we're finding is along the river, um, that the flood walls are being eroded because they, um, um, sort of build out their camps to stabilize the, the ground. And so that, that's a concern, the needles are a concern, um, and it's our drinking water, but also, um, you know, we've had a few deaths, um, in the river too because they have fallen in and it's, you know, it, it's not about not having heart or compassion, it's about safety for all of us, for absolutely all of us. So I have a plan, I've reached out to, um, I think, every council member and asked for your support. Um, and we'll, we'll roll that out.
I'll, I'll look at that email and I just wanted to share that, you know, many people understand that, you know, this is a, this is something that's very dangerous for all concerned. But when.
Yeah.
The city taxpayers, um, and those folks are trying to ride their bikes with their family and wa, drive along there and they can't do it and, I mean, and folks are getting to the point where they're, they're pretty angry about it. So, and I feel angry too when I look down there and I see people walking through our plaza and there's so many people laying there every morning, all day long, um, laying on the grassy area.
Yeah, I, um, so Vice Mayor Doer and myself, um, have a, a plan and we think, quite honestly, we all pay a flood tax, um, through, you know, um, through, uh, the flood. Yes. Okay, so we all pay for that, right? And we really believe that that money should go into protecting and preserving the river because we all pay for it. Um, we do have, it has to be a unanimous vote over there and so that's why I'm asking all of us to come together with your supporters, your constituents, and when we put that item on the agenda, that you please, please, please show up in support, that you want the river to have river rangers and to be cleaned and protected because that's not happening now and it's incredibly concerning and that's, um, you know, Vice Mayor and I have really been pushing that direction. But we could all use your support, uh, to get this done.
Thank you.
No, no, but we, we need to do that now, but we, it won't happen unless all of you guys help us. And I think you, and I think you can do it, you're all.
Thank you for sharing that.
Powerful. All right, what else?
Madam Mayor, I would be looking for adjournment from council, but please don't leave because we do need to go through redevelopment.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, calling the redevelopment agency to order, roll call for that is Breckis, Absen, Doer, Delgado.
Here.
Weber. Jarden. Reese. Shivi.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum of the redevelopment agency, we have no general public comment. I would be looking for approval of your redevelopment agenda.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, transitioning to approval of the minutes for July 24th and July 31st.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, no general public comment, uh, we've already gone over updates from boards and commissions. We'd be looking for movement, uh, adjournment, please.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, everyone, I appreciate all your feedback, good job today. Before two, amazing, okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the efficiency of council, we are adjourned.